Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council Workshop for Monday, March 11th, 2024. Let the record reflect, we are starting at 6:31. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Thank you. And item number three tonight, we do have public comment. We do have a couple members of the public signed up first. We do have Joe DiCiato. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes for your comments to counsel.
Hi, I'm Joe DiCiato. I live at 9 North Ave., which is just across from the small beach in Saco where Eastern Avenue meets Northern Avenue, the one that keeps overflowing. So, the reason I'm here is I'm trying to implore the city to do something before next storms regarding the overflow of the beach. And I'm not going to appeal from a citizen's standpoint, I'm going to appeal from a money standpoint. Being at one of these town meetings previously to fix North Road, which washes out every year and costs a quarter of a million dollars. This year, not only did North Road wash out, but Eastern Avenue washed out, which took out my friend Bernie's foundation, but that probably is another quarter of a million dollars. So that's a half a million dollars. Considering we've had 300-year storms in the last month and a half, I don't expect these to get better anytime soon. Being at the coastal meeting on Friday, it seems that the Army Corps of Engineers, at least at this point, is undecided when they're going to put the spur to the jetty in. At best, it's probably a couple of years. If we have storms like this, which we expect we will, I'm not sure there's going to be a lot of Saco to do that. So, forgetting the money that the beach brings in from revenue in the summer, forgetting the fact that you guys have a community center that Dan is building, and you're putting money into that that floods every time that street floods because of its elevation, and the fact that it costs a quarter of a million dollars at least, and probably a half a million dollars now going forward each year, mediating that beach, preventing some of the flooding, has got to be much cheaper. I don't know the ins and outs of how to do it. I've heard of a steel wall, maybe it's rocks with a bridge over it, I don't know, but I think it is in the town's best economic interest to fix it and to fix it before next year's storms. Thank you.
Next up, I do apologize, I cannot read the last name, Benjamin?
Milan?
Milan?
Anyway, I'm not sure if it's my name or not, but I'm Bernie Mallon. I'm on the corner of Eastern Ave. Anybody that's been down there knows that my foundation kind of got taken out in the first storm. Actually, I had damage on the Wednesday before, and I worked diligently trying to restore the property to stop any water from coming across the road. I spent like two 16-hour days, literally into 10 o'clock the night before. The second storm came on the 13th, and it took everything I did plus more out. So, I'm asking that if there's some type of mitigation that can be done before the Army Corps of Engineers has their plan, like, in place, the way it is right now. I would be surprised if any of the buildings around me in two years, if we just keep going the way we're going. For whatever reason, the wave action is something like I've never seen before, and I've been there for 20 years. I'm not sure if it's because of the erosion, and now we're actually not beachfront property, but we're in the ocean kind of property, you know? When I look across the road, it's down like 20 feet, and this storm yesterday, one of the reasons why it came up, did substantially more damage. And the wall that I put in to protect the property after the 13th got knocked down again. So I'm kind of like at the end of what I can do. I'm asking, I'm appealing to the town, like, have a little bit of mercy on those guys up there. I don't mind paying more taxes or helping out however I can, but they need to do something. If it could be a steel wall or more rocks, there's needs, there has to be something done. We're not going to be there in three years. It's just, we're not going to be there. So, I appeal to you to do whatever you can. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gary Dugnot.
Hi, I'm Gary Dugnot, from 10 North Avenue, just diagonal from that little beach in Camp Ellis. Like many of us here, we're on the front lines of this seemingly never-ending fight with Mother Nature. First of all, I want to thank SOS for putting this workshop on, Mayor McPhail, Saco City Councilors for being here. I also want to give special thanks to Public Works Director Pat Fox and his team at DPW for digging us out time and time again. Also, the Fire Department, Public Safety Departments for their work during the recent storms. I would be remiss if I did not give a big shout to Dan, Harbor Master Dan Chadbourne back there, for his work on the old fire barn, the pier, and the docks during the early January storms. He risked life and limb getting his docks back on the shore. You may not be able to tell, but under that polished exterior is a man with a huge heart who loves Camp Ellis as much as any of us. Thanks, Dan. As a lifelong summer resident of Camp Ellis, I've seen houses come and go, but in 2024 so far, three storms have caused the most devastation that I've ever witnessed, causing millions of damage to personal property and public infrastructure. I feel lucky that I escaped catastrophic damage at my home compared to some of my neighborhood and up the coast. It's natural to feel saddened for all my neighbors who have suffered losses this year. I know that the residents of our little community of Camp Ellis are feeling frustrated, angry, stressed, and probably even hopeless about the continuing damage caused by storms and the jetty. But I do feel we will come back Camp Ellis strong. It seems that we're still three years or more away from the Army Corps of Engineers' work beginning on the jetty. I fear that my home and several others, as Bernie stated, may not make it till then. We need a temporary fix to fend off the constant barrage of waves, water, boulders, and sand. Whether it's a newly-built rock wall, properly-built rock walls, I've heard there are several in Massachusetts that do a great job, sheet piling, like we have over on the other end of Surf Ave., I believe it is, something's got to be done. Whether it's the DEP is going to, you know, you ask for forgiveness rather than permission, we've got to do something quick. I read that York County Commission had a meeting in February regarding the dredge and possibly getting it running this fall, and I just wondered if we could get assistance anyway to get it running this fall, so we can be probably first in line in Saco Bay to get some sand pumped on the beach. Because when we did get the dredge three years ago, it did last for six months, but it really helped us through the winter. If we do the same old repairs, getting the same old results, Camp Ellis will soon get washed away. And on a final note, there's still a lot of cleanup to be done in the neighborhood. Can we place another dumpster in the area, or at least identify certain locations where we can put debris, so that the city can pick it up? Summer's coming, and we just want to be proud of our Camp Ellis again and work as a community to try to save it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, we have Mayor Burgess.
Hello, my name is Marty Burgess. I'm with the Ferry Beach Retreat and Conference Center down on Ferry Road. So I just want to express my appreciation for the workshop and let you know that we're, as an organization, we're prepared and willing to help out coordinate the whatever mitigation is taking place along the way. Our secondary dune that we put in 15 years ago is now the primary dune, and we lost about half of it in the recent storms. And it's got that corner by Island View Ave. that's washing out. So I really appreciate everyone's effort on this and various works. So, we're available for assistance somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there was no one else signed up. If there were any other members of the public that wish to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Molina, 23, Camp Ellis Avenue. We've been in Camp Ellis for about 25 years now. We are definitely in dire straits at this point. I want to thank the mayor, the whole council, SOS, the Shoreline Commission for all your dedication to this. The town's spending a lot of money on the infrastructure, we all know that, to help us out. At the same time that sometimes it's not brought up that much, is what comes back from what you do. When I'm on the beach in the summer on a nice day, I count 150 to 200 people on that beach. That's a lot of money that's going back into the community, not just Camp Ellis, but into Saco, into the mom and pop restaurants, into their stores. So while the town is investing in us, it's also getting something back. And I just hope that as you're doing all this, we could really use some sand for many reasons, and that's one of the reasons this year, until we can get the Army Corps to start their work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any other members wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Kim Smith. I live at 27 Lower Beach Road, Camp Ellis. My husband Ray and I made a major investment in the area when we purchased Camp Ellis General Store last spring. Our chances for success and survival depend upon a vital Camp Ellis. I stand here tonight following a winter of three destructive storms. Like everyone else, a little uncertain of our future. We, and other businesses, we had a great year last year, and we're investing more money into the future of the property. We believe in Camp Ellis and the importance of the shoreline. Sharing that belief with us, taking the appropriate action, is what we need. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone. That moves on to the workshop item. The first workshop item tonight, agenda number A, is the York County Dredge Equipment Status Update. With us tonight, we do have York County Commissioner Justin Shanet, who will provide an update on the dredge.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor McPhail, and members of the county, the city council. Appreciate the invitation. For those of you who did attend the Friday Saco Bay Coastal Erosion Symposium that was put on by SOS Saco Bay, some of this might be a nice refresher, but we'll continue that conversation and dialogue. The high-line message is the county is working towards operationalizing the dredge. As many of you know, the initial intent when the dredge was voted for approval using ARPA dollars, federal dollars, was with the creation of the Dredge Authority, an outside entity, to operate and own the dredge. After the construction of the dredge and the delivery of the dredge, it came to our attention that it's a little bit more complicated to hand over a piece of equipment that was purchased using federal dollars, particularly ARPA dollars. As you can imagine, any engagement with the federal government, though we all appreciate the important work that the federal government has, there's a couple layers of bureaucracy there to get not only answers but clarity. That work continues, but as we've sort of articulated and heard from the public tonight and ongoing, this is an urgent matter, and we can't sit idly by and wait around for the federal government to tell us what we can and cannot do. So in the meantime, the county is exploring all options for us to own and operate the dredge ourselves, because it is our intent, as it is, I'm sure, everyone in this room, that we get the dredge in the water as soon as humanly possible. And that is our goal. So currently, the county is engaged with a company that has experience with dredge operations, particularly in Barnstable County in Massachusetts. The consultant is working with us on all the logistics and particulars, and the costs, the additional costs associated with getting the dredge in the water. And so far, our understanding is there's some additional costs that weren't accounted for, or we did not anticipate. So for instance, just to get it assembled to get into the water is a four- to five-day process with an outside team coming in. It's roughly at the cost of $8,500 a day to do so. Again, that wasn't anticipated, but we're working to find monies to cover those costs. And we're looking at, you know, monies from settlement dollars, investment on certain different line items, just pockets of resources that we can utilize for this purpose. In addition, it's abundantly clear that it's not going to necessarily be county staff that's doing this work on a regular basis. We have to hire and contract out a company who has experience in doing this. This can be a complicated undertaking, it's not simple. I know how to operate a dredge. We want somebody who has expert experience on that, and that's what we're planning on doing. In the meantime, we're having a number of conversations with towns up and down the coast, including the city of Saco, and we appreciate the city administrator's engagement on that front. Obviously, we would have to have MOUs in terms of our engagement with those towns to figure out what they want and what they need. And not every town knows what they want and need when it comes to dredge operations. And so, as this is not just an isolated issue, this is something that many communities are facing in terms of coastal erosion, not necessarily from the same issue, but a lot of communities are faced with similar challenges. And so there's opportunities for us to utilize the dredge. And like the dredge authority has mentioned before, this is an opportunity for us to engage every community along the coast, particularly in York County. And in particular, those discussions have led us to identify wells as a possible entry point to get the dredge in the water. And so, working with wells officials to try to do so. We're also trying to engage the expertise of UNE. It's such a valuable resource, as you know, for not just Bitterford, but the surrounding area and our entire state of Maine. And so we appreciate their willingness to engage their various departments. And so there's a number of students and staff members who are interested in participating, and particularly the mapping and surveying that's needed as part of this process. So we do anticipate utilizing that important resource as well. And at this point, the dredge is on every single meeting agenda at the county level. This is a critical priority for us, as it is everyone in this room. And so we're, you know, working diligently to try to make sure we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, to make sure we can get this in the water this year. So, that's our objective, that's our shared goal, and that's a brief update about where we're at.
Thank you, Justin. We also have Kevin Roach and David Plaven with us guys from SOS tonight. Do you have anything to add to that?
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have a couple things. Number one, and the city administrator is well aware of this, is that the city of Saco put aside $170,000 last year for us to get the dredge authority up and running. If the county is able to take management of the dredge, I ask that the city look to use that money in a different manner, but keep it dredge-related and not just forfeit it. The dredge authority will probably be a non-factor once the county establishes a game plan on how to operate it. But that money could be used for anything, including getting the dredge into Saco Bay, or into Camp Ellis especially, to do some work on it. The other thing I would suggest, the county look very strongly at the state for financial aid to this. aid to this. I think there's, I know there's money at the state level for all sorts of things related to recent storms and other damage, and this is obviously clearly related to that and that, you know, any one of our local state representatives would be a good resource to reach out to. We are all very much aware of how much it's going to cost to get this in the water and get it up and running, but I'm not sure we can wait for each individual community town to decide what it wants to do, especially when there are towns like Saco, Wells, perhaps even Scarborough that already have ongoing dredge plans or desperate needs for dredges.
Kevin?
Thank you. Similar to Dave's point, the money that you have, it might be down to about $150,000 left. Yeah, that would be included of moving the dredge land-wise to where it would port in. You know, the likely candidates would be Scarborough or Wells, and I'm fully supportive of getting it, what Wells has set up. The five days of $8,500 a day, there is cost there. I'd like them to check, the county to check with Ellicott. I don't think they had estimated that number of days, but there is, if it does include the crane, the crane will be pulling out the existing dredge that's happening in Wells right now. So that could be a cost savings in their negotiations. But Wells has it all lined up. So what I would ask from the city of Saco, what I would, if you were the city of Saco asking in your contribution to get that dredge there is make sure sure that the dredge, if in the water Wells, that what you're paying for is also be first in line to push the dredge up to Saco by November, December. So, but the goal is absolutely in the water, preferably before the summer. That's always been the goal. The outsourcing companies, if they're talking to similar companies, we have engaged with two companies already. One of them is doing the dredge right now in Wells and in Scarborough. They have a 15-person crew in each location, 24/7. They're staying, they sometimes meet up together halfway in between, give them some good Saco restaurants to frequent, hopefully, that they're already bringing some economic activity here. And yeah, if it can full steam ahead to put it in the water and out of our Saco Public Works parking lot as soon as possible. Thanks.
Okay, councilors, standard workshop procedures, open discussion. Any questions or conversations with Commissioner Shanet or David and Kevin?
I think I'll start off with a comment. I'm glad to see all these items on the floor now. I mean, what, my seventh year now, and we've been talking about the, everything from the jetty to just how do we really solve Camp Ellis and the effects of global warming and other aspects related to what's going on here locally. I sat here and I looked over to the right where I see two generals, and as a Marine, I always learn from quotes, and I just thought it was relevant to start this conversation with because it captures how I feel about it, is back in Korea, Marine General Smith was quoted for saying, "Retreat, hell, we're just attacking in a different direction." And that's where I truly believe Saco is now. We're starting to get all of our resources to align in which we can actually help to combat what's been going on, not just on Camp Ellis and beach, but it also comes up the river. The river attaches, pretty much attaches to all wards except for III and II. Is that correct? Yeah. So I mean, it affects Ward I, it affects V, VII, VI, IV. So I mean, it does require the city-wide approach, and I'm just glad to now find all these resources are coming in alignment that actually provides a solid attack. I mean, that's effectively what we're doing. We're trying to push the water back, and I think we have plenty of solutions that we can discuss, everything from the dredge itself to other seawalls and structures that could be out there, new structures, new technology. And then again, on coastal dune damage, I did attend last week's event, and we will need citizens that are on the beach. We're going to need their permissions to really help. So it's not just the city doing it. We're going to need our citizens in some cases to give us access to the land, to help really build up the sand walls. For example, I have a place down in Florida not too far. Their berms, the sand berms are taller than I am. They're like 15 feet tall, and that's how they found ways. So I know that there's solutions out there. From my family being Dutch on my spouse's side, I know they do very well with pushing the water back. Their engineers are used to it. So we've got to have a solution, and I think we're starting that path, and this is the workshop that does it. Workshops lead to action, and I look forward to what we have to say. Thank you.
So correct me if I'm wrong. I was under the impression of the 170, did we prepay for the assembly and training of the dredge? Is that where the reduction of the, is there any prepayment that was done towards that?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay.
The, so far, the county paid to have it put on whatever it's on now at Public Works. That was part of the county responsibility. Ellicott is also responsible, helped set it up, and they're, part of the arrangement is for them to do so. So, and that 170, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was never really intended for anything physical. It was more for, you know, finding an executive director to run an authority and get everything operational, so. Okay, thank you.
And a question for Commissioner Shanet. Once this is up and running and the county has made all of their determinations, what is the priority of choosing the first receiving municipality?
Well, hopefully Saco. That's the goal. That's something that I'd be advocating for. I don't think we've gone down that path yet. I think a lot of the discussions over the last couple months have been, should we be the ones to own it and operationalize it? And I think the answer has gotten us to a place of yes. While we, you know, again, ensure that we have a Plan B, I always think it's good to have a Plan A and Plan B, but we would obviously work with city administrator and in the community here to try to recognize the urgent need that we have, and I think everyone recognizes that. And I think in the discussions that we've had all along for now many years, I think we recognize that Saco has the immediate need. So that's something that we would help to prioritize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Didn't want to just jump right in there.
Yep.
I just wanted to publicly state that I'm going to agree with Councilor Archer. This is a citywide challenge, and we all have to step up and do what we can to get creative and make it work. In that vein, I would be open to, and this is my own opinion as a counselor, I'd be open to looking at the remaining monies that we've already budgeted, and even though they may have been intended for operational issues, to give some consideration to using that funding if it helps move the dredge, get it into the water, whatever that cost may be, that we consider doing that. The only thing I would ask in addition to a priority use of the dredge is that whatever monies the city of Saco puts in to make this all happen for the benefit of the county, that we accumulate that cost and somehow negotiate some sort of discount on our initial invoices for work so that our taxpayers can see us get that money back in time, if you will. And it doesn't have to be every bill, but maybe 10% or 15% or 20% of it just reduces whatever we have to pay to compensate us for the money that we've allowed to be used for the benefit of the entire county. But other than that, I would be very, personally very open-minded to consider some sort of creative way to reallocate that remaining $159,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question really more for Commissioner Shanet, although I'd welcome the other gentleman to weigh in on this though, because I think there needs to be some clarity on this. Is the idea of even creating a dredge authority at this point a dead letter? Or is at this point, are we essentially, is the county essentially owning it in perpetuity until there's some, can be some sort of device? Is it still a possibility to have a dredge authority? Or are we at, or did the feds pretty much say that's not going to happen?
That's a great question, Counselor. I think if we were to continue to go down this path of operationalizing and owning the dredge, I think David had even indicated this, that there might not be a use for the dredge authority. It would be kind of duplicating in terms of its usefulness. I think the intent of the dredge authority was to essentially have an outside entity run it, and if we don't need that as a purpose, there isn't a need for another layer of bureaucracy. So I think our intent would be to probably not utilize that as the mechanism and continue to, again, own and operate the dredge at the county level. There has not been, I don't believe, any discussion around if we were to continue along this path, is there another purpose for the dredge authority? I don't necessarily think there probably would be. I think if we get it in the water and we're running it fine and everyone's happy, I don't see a need for another level, but you know, totally open to that feedback that we can take back. But we have not, I don't know if there's not a decision point on, you know, what to do with the dredge authority, I don't believe, David. And then at what point do we then consider, you know, dissolving that? I mean, that's a separate entity at this point, so I can't speak for the dredge authority. It's a separate nonprofit entity, so they would have to make that determination. I would say we shouldn't make any decision on its future until we know for sure the dredge is in the water. I would think that that would be something we'd want to be 100% sure, because again, I'd like a Plan B. I think we've all been down so many paths with not just Camp Ellis but with various levels of government, and I think it's always good. Obviously, we feel really good about the direction that this is taking, but to know that that dredge authority is there and we're still pursuing some clarity from the federal government, until that clarity at least is brought in, I would be hesitant to move forward with dissolving or suggesting that they dissolve that entity.
And if I may, as a follow-up though, the one reason I bring that up is because I realize I obviously don't have the numbers in front of me. There was a debate at the county level to even acquire it in the first place, and one of the reasons, I think, former Mayor Doyle and others championed having a dredge authority was to sort of depoliticize it, or sort of like we have with BSAB though, once you have three cities that have buy-in to an organization, it becomes a third rail, and I mean that in a good way, that no one's going to unilaterally pull out and destroy a program. So the idea that, you know, that some county commissioners may have had the willies about actually agreeing to this in the first place, I don't want to get to a situation where, you know, 10, 20 years down the line, you know, perhaps they are not seeing the use that we envisioned, because obviously with having an authority, the idea was, I mean, Saco's idea essentially, so we were essentially the first among equals, the idea to use this to get us through the dredge season and then essentially rent it out though to give our neighboring communities a discount so they wouldn't have to stand at attention waiting for the feds to come in. I wouldn't want to see that all fall apart because of, you know, three votes at the county level. So that was, oh, I figured I'd just throw that out there to you, Commissioner, because obviously, you know, sitting there in the town in Alfred, though, you've seen what it's like to reform that body, and I followed your efforts and, you know, plus and minuses in terms of how it's turned out though. So that's just a valid concern I think we should all have, because sometimes when you get that far in and you're thinking about that type of money though, you know, living on the coast, I mean, even the city of Saco, up in Ward I, Ward II, sometimes you forget about the real effects it has on people's lives. So I wouldn't want to see that get lost over a simple matter of being counted, for lack of better term.
Yeah. I appreciate that sentiment, Counselor. I think, you know, one thing to think about though is, you know, the county is really the glue that holds all of our communities together. So I think, you know, in our discussions with the commission since that vote took place, which it was a divided vote, I think we're all in agreement, I think I can speak for my colleagues as well, when I say that we want to, we want to make sure that the investment from taxpayers is adequately used for the intended purpose. And so we have a vested interest in making sure that this is a success for not just Saco but for the wider region. And so even commissioners that may have been in opposition to moving forward with a dredge project are in agreement that we need to make this work and this needs to be successful. So that gives me a little reassurance that we're on the right path and we're bringing folks along with us along the way. And I think SOS Saco Bay and the dredge authority have helped my fellow commissioners to see the importance of this project. So their expertise, their guidance throughout every step of the way has been incredibly important because their advocacy has been with us every single step of the way. So it's important for the other commissioners to hear that, to see that, and obviously with each storm becoming more and more powerful, I think they can watch the news just like the rest of us and recognize the urgent moment that we're in.
Thank you.
Further answer, yeah, we're just going to keep things on hold, like everything just waits for the county. I mean, originally, we modeled this after the Barnstable County Cape Cod model, and the county early on was not up for running the dredge. And then when it got closer to get the votes we needed, we needed to set up an authority because SOS Saco Bay is, as just mentioned, we're an advocacy group. We're not an asset holder. We're not a dredge operator by any means. But, you know, we did the legwork to get good expertise around us, to travel down to Barnstable, to set up a budget that we presented to the city of Saco to get the 170,000 of ARPA funds. There's two reasons why, outside of who, you know, if the county wasn't going to run it, of why it was the Southern Maine dredge authority. One was, we did want and we anticipate, just like Barnstable County did, is to get state involvement, if not funding. And so the Southern Maine, Southern Maine, or it could have been Maine, you know, we had interest up north as well. In fact, one of our outsourced companies heard about us and communicated of interest to actually operate the dredge. So it could even be a whole state of Maine operation. The second reason is our friends in Scarborough. If it wasn't for Scarborough, wasn't for Wells, we probably wouldn't be talking right now. And of course, Scarborough is not part of York County, so, but they can be a customer or something to do that line. So I don't think York County would abandon Scarborough just because they're just over the line, right? So, but that's why we've, you know, a couple reasons, side reasons, why we've definitely kept the authority as is as we wait things happen, so.
Thank you.
I want to agree with Counselor Hatch that this is important to both our property owners, our business, our fishermen, and every member of the community enjoys Camp Ellis. I think another authority is going to add another layer of tape. We're already dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, the state, the municipalities. We need to find a way to get this done. We're very fortunate because there has been destruction of the property. We haven't lost any life, and before that happens, we need to get this dredge in the water and make this happen. And if there is funds available, what do we need to do to make that occur?
You had said, Justin, that pretty much every meeting right now has the dredge on the agenda. For residents that may want to follow up on the county side, when are the meetings and how can they watch?
First and third Wednesday of the month at the county administration building at 4:30 PM. The good thing is if you go to York County Government's Facebook page, you can get the Zoom link, so you don't even have to physically go to Alfred, our county seat, for those conversations. You can not only listen in, but you can actually submit public testimony remotely as well, and the majority of folks do it remotely at this point. So very accessible from that standpoint. I'm also happy to pass along any questions, comments, or concerns, if any constituent would have anything that they'd like me to pass along, so that's an open, you know, invitation. And I would also say, you know, depending on the direction that the council wants to take, I think there's an open dialogue between our administrators, and so maybe between our administrators. And so maybe them coming together to kind of iron out maybe some opportunities there might be a great starting point to make a suggestion. Obviously, they're likely to have the numbers even more than I do, so maybe there's some opportunity there to partner. And I know there's, as the city administrator might articulate, there are frequent meetings that occur with all the administrators, so.
Great. Thank you.
Your Honor, if you might, we're in the process of a setting of a meeting relative to this.
Wonderful.
To Counselor Hatch's and Counselor Hewitt's point, a question for you, Commissioner. Would this be just a matter of essentially allocating some or all of the monies that we set aside, essentially to put a down payment essentially for the use of it, regardless of what the timetable actually ends up being?
Well, let me be clear that I'm not necessarily coming before you to ask for money. I think it's really just a down-
This is more of a procedure question, because we're going into budget season.
Of course.
Something we want to have on the back of our minds, that should we be putting more of this money aside? What does the county, if the county's running it, what do they need, et cetera, et cetera?
I think right now, we're still in sort of the discovery phase, if you will, of determining what exactly are the hard costs that's going to take to get into the water. I think we're very close. I think, again, we're working with the consultant. I'd like to see that final number before I'm confident to say, okay, it's going to be XYZ dollars. I think we have some estimates so far, based on the good work of SOS Saco Bay and others. But I think at the county level, they're really looking to have, like, the blueprint in front of them, which I think you can appreciate as well. So I think we're really close to having that. I don't think we're ready at this point to say this is the high-line number that would be helpful. Again, as I mentioned, we are trying to find even county dollars for this purpose, because this is, again, a county-wide, it's not just a county-wide issue, it's all up and down the coast, right? And so it's everyone's benefit that we get that in the water. So I think there would definitely be opportunities for the city and the county to partner and maybe, as Counselor Hatch and Counselor Hewitt had mentioned, maybe utilize some of those resources. But I'd want to make sure that we all see that blueprint together and then see maybe with our administrators, sort of, how we can come together.
I think that action could be really moving, moving along quickly. If you get your arms around those costs and then make a presentation to City Administrator Bohenko. You know, we, there was a mention of the execution of MOUs to start the action. And I think that if we know how much it's going to cost to put it in the water, and then Saco will be the first one to benefit from that, whatever that cost is, we can capture and in the MOU propose some sort of recapturing of that money in the reduction of whatever fees we would normally pay to have the dredge operating in Saco. So I think, I'm talking at 30,000 feet here, but I think if you can assemble a really good, get a good handle on what it's going to cost to put that dredge in the water as soon as possible, and then begin that communication with City Administrator Bohenko, you know, he's perfectly capable of getting his arms around that and then sitting with us and trying to figure out, is there a way in which we can be your first MOU?
Absolutely.
With money and money that will be recaptured through some sort of discounting. So I would encourage you to do that as quickly as possible.
Happy to take that back. Thank you, Counselor.
Commissioner, I was just thinking to add on to this. I like the idea of a credit, if that's what's needed, in which we front some costs, but then we get a credit paid down over time, future dredging. Where I was going with that is maybe we can be your pilot program, is that we take it at a very 50,000-foot level and we try it as a pilot program, not necessarily the whole program itself. I do want it to exist, but we're that test subject. We are the beta tester of how to do it. That way, we can get some good data on cost. We can get data on everything, but come up to a formal agreement through our administrators and the councils and your board. I think there's a solution. And again, I mean, every good project needs a pilot. So I think we have a pilot. That's of the dredge, but joke. But, yeah, I think there's something, there's a solution here, I think, especially if we can start getting services by this winter, even if the entities aren't defined yet, who owns it. There could be a, what's the word I'm looking, acting, an acting capacity entity, in a temporary type, contracted type, something legal that I would go to my lawyers for. Take care. That's good.
Thank you, Counselor.
I think one of the things to remember, the idea of an MOU is to be a little more nimble as we go forward. There's no formal contract, but it does bind certain aspects of what we want to go forward with. I don't want to, I don't think right now everybody's prepared to get into a, you know, an agreement that might be a five- or 10-year agreement. I think the MOU will allow the county the comfort that there is commitment on the part of the various municipalities. So looking at the MOU, I suspect it will be broad range and just more or less getting cities and towns to have some kind of commitment. Later on, I think there'll be more defined legal aspects to this.
Totally agree. I think you're spot on. And I would also ask that when we get that dredge in the water, that the mayor of Saco break the champagne bottle on the hull. Hey, that's my other request.
I think we're all going to be excited for that moment, absolutely.
And no pressure, because if you don't score correctly and it doesn't shatter, it's bad luck, bad luck forever. So no pressure.
The mayor can practice beforehand, yes.
Are we champagne? Yes, you can.
I do want to recognize and invite up Rick Millard, who is on the Southern Maine dredge authority right now. He did have something he wanted to add.
Yes. I'm very concerned with the conversation at this point, because it sounds like, once the dredge is in the water, the problem is solved. Not the case. It will not operate alone. It needs other pieces of equipment to support it. Whether they come from another company or somewhere else, whether they're beg, borrowed, stolen, what have you, there are a number of pieces that need to go with it so that we can operate the dredge. It just seems to me right now that what I'm hearing is, we get some MOUs, we get it in the water, and we're off and running. And that is not the case. And I really didn't want anybody to be surprised with that. There are 100 ways to work this. Just need to understand that there are other pieces that are necessary. Thank you.
And I think that's a great point, because there is substantial capital needs to be able to operate. So it could be substantial. So that's why I think Commissioner is trying to be a little careful, because there is substantial sums of money that needs to be spent.
We're absolutely not saying that. So we're not saying that the problem ends when it gets in the water. That has never been said by any of us at SOS Saco Bay. That's where it comes to outsourcing. We have talked to these companies. They have the equipment. Wells has the push boats. If you go down there and see the videos of the exact dredge being pushed around the harbor, it is being done right now by this company we're engaged with. It might be a one-year thing, it might be a two-year thing, until either the county or the authority gets equipment. But it has always been the case that it would be outsourced to a company. And they're engaged right now.
Right.
Let me, let me just address what Counselor Hewitt said about kind of get rid of the red tape and first get it to the water. It is there for the taking. The money that's with Saco was thought to be to get it land transported locally. Now, Wells is a little further away, but it should be the same driving cost, around the same driving cost. You're going to need a crane to load it onto, onto the, onto the truck. And then for the contract with Ellicott, the dredge company, they supervise the assembly. They don't pay for the laborers. But I have the message from Ellicott, and I'll send it to Justin afterwards. But their quote, their expectation, it's three days in the water with their help. So if it's $8,500 a day, that'd be three days. But it might not be $8,500 a day if Ellicott is communicating with the county that they'll be there to supervise and maybe take some of those expenses. But there really is limited, limited reasons why not to get that dredge in the water. Wells can certainly host it, and they have other equipment there, and their harbinger is ready to go. But it can get into the water in, I think by May, and then be, then you go from there. There's work to be done to actually, you know, get the right permits to dredge and be ready for them, and then definitely negotiate how it gets towed up here. It's a good little distance, and the weather's going to be good, so.
I don't think anybody was really trying to say, you know, I think the idea of what Rick was saying and what we're all saying, and you included, is that there is additional costs that we have to be aware of. Even if we outsource it, somebody's going to be, we're going to be paying for it. So I think what Commissioner was saying, and I agree with him, we all, the administrators have to get together, we've got to put a budget together, we have to see what that cost is going to be, and how do you divide that cost. So I think everybody's talking the same language, it's just a matter of how we're saying it. And I think everybody's willing to move forward. I think I've heard nothing but positive here tonight, so.
And I think one of the advantages and that we are all aware of, the difference between the city doing the dredge versus getting the Army Corps, is the amount of sand that we can get out of the river. The Army Corps is limited to their federal channel, as we saw back in 2021 when we did the dredge. What'd we get, 60,000? How many QB cards?
2019, but, yeah, it was, it was, we also had upper and lower dredging, too.
So they're restricted to a very small area of the river. Doing it personally and privately with the dredge, we can hit every single aspect of the river to be able to double, if not triple, the amount of sand that's brought out. So that is one of the main focuses and the primary backing to get this, to be able to do it privately and not rely on the Army Corps, knowing that we're going to triple our amount of sand. Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Copeland, we do have Representative Copeland. Did you want to make a quick statement?
Sure. Hi, my name is Representative Lynn Copeland. I live on the Ferry Road, and I'm proud to represent House District 130. So there is a place for the state to come in here. I'm sure you're aware of that. The governor signed the resolution that she would help in whatever ways. We just have to ask her. So she's aware of the situation as well. We have the state park there. That's, what?
Can you make that a little bit more? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a lot of resources, and we have the, from the Maine Geological
Survey, our good friend Peter Slavinsky, thank you, Rick. So we do have some resources there. And it's right, you know, in the document the governor signed. And also, I had offered through the state for the Attorney General's Office to help with the public-private partnership agreement or whatever. And I don't, I don't know that anybody contacted the state. So if you can tell me what you need from the state, I'm happy to advocate for it. I really do believe that there's a lot going on with the coast right now, and there are some funds. So use me, I'm here at your disposal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for everybody for that update.
Thank you very much.
Next on the item, we do have the existing coastal seawalls and sea structures, and we are bringing up Director Pat Fox, DPW. And I believe he has a presentation in video or film.
Yep. Good evening. I'll get set up. We're going to, so we're going to, the two agenda items for the workshop were seawalls and then the coastal dune system and what we can do to maintain it, how it works, what's permissible, what's not. Touch on all those topics. Everything else is fair game, obviously, related to coastal erosion mitigation. I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with a video that I would say is current condition, but this was filmed last week, and then we had another major storm. So it's close to current condition. So we'll touch on seawalls, go into dunes, and we'll probably end up going back and forth between both of them. And then a lot of comments here tonight were from the Camp Ellis neighborhood on road rebuilds, where I'm happy to touch on that as well, if you'd like. So you're welcome to watch this video, or listen to me, or do both if you'd like. So this is, when we talk about seawalls in Saco and we talk about metal sheet pile walls, this is the only sheet pile wall that Saco owns and maintains. This was installed in 2018 or so, after a major disaster. We had planned on doing 300 feet, and the installation and permitting of this coincided with another coastal, major coastal storm. So we ended up doing 500 feet of seawall with an access point that you can see there, kind of in the middle. These walls are not allowed everywhere per state regulation. This one took six months of permitting and collaboration and discussions with Maine Department of Environmental Protection. You can see one of our old geotubes in the front there. That large white was a previous erosion mitigation step we had taken back in 2007. That was the remnants of that step. This seawall location that you're looking at, the key to the city being able to install that was it went in the middle of Surf Street. So it went in the middle of a former roadway. It wasn't all that long ago, we had traffic on that road all the way through that area with dune on the outside of it. And, switch over to this. So when that seawall, the only reason it could get permitted is because we were willing to give up a roadway to do so. It could not have gone next to the roadway, it could not have gone seaward of our built infrastructure, it could not have replaced an existing dune system. So that's important when you think of seawalls. And for residents who have seawalls, they can build, replace, maintain an existing seawall, but they can't replace a natural system or dune system with a seawall. That's not, not permissible. And there are sound reasons behind that as far as what it can do to the natural environment surrounding it and several other factors. I will not tonight pretend to be a DEP regulator or a member of Maine Geological Survey or a member of Army Corps of Engineers, but I can at least touch on why some things are allowed in some places and not others. We chose to pursue the seawall because it was in the transition area from our really hard structure environment, which is the jetty and the rock revetment that extends well over 1,000 feet north of the jetty. So the further you get from the jetty, the less damage and wave energy you're seeing created by the jetty, but that extends quite a bit north. And the rock revetment was the first step to help save roads, infrastructure, utilities, and homes over the years. That was no longer, once the dune regulations came into play, I mean, that was not a, you could not keep going with that rock. That's not legal in today's environment to just keep extending rock down our coastline. So we tried a number of strategies to transition from rock to the natural dune that you see sort of in the, in the top end of that, of that slide. So we tried the, we tried just purely sand in between those two zones. We've put, you know, thousands and thousands of yards of sand at that location, because that's what was allowed. Then we worked with the regulatory agencies to do the geotubes. Those, we were probably the first ones in Maine to do something like that. And now the sheet pile wall was an exemption because we had a roadway there. So one strategy is that, you know, we know that we can use and work with our regulatory agencies on, is seawalls can go in roadways. I think they're very case-by-case basis, but in general, we can work with the regulatory agencies to replace a hard structure like a roadway with a seawall. That's incorporating a bit of a retreat, which is a preferred method- That's incorporating a bit of a retreat, which is a preferred method, especially with climate change, while still preserving the upland area and reducing our annual maintenance costs. It's worth saying, every time we, every time we have a declared disaster, so when you hear about these declared disasters, it takes our staff and our resources and our contractors and our consultants, it takes us a year to get through, get things rebuilt and get through the process of proving to the federal government what we spent on it, and getting our 75% to 85% back from the declared, the declared disaster funds. Problem in Saco is, we might have five or six similar events locally because of how erosive our coastline is, that the rest of southern Maine doesn't experience, so we don't meet the FEMA thresholds across the county or the state, and we're paying for that with local dollars. But our, some of our rebuild costs are lower than our surrounding communities. When you see declared disasters and Saco's number looks low, it's because we have had to deal with erosion more than other communities, so we have deployed strategies that have worked and saved money for decades. So we don't have sewer lines and water lines in these frontal road areas like other communities still do. We don't have overhead power on some of those, we've worked to get that out of there. So a lot of our utility and road rebuild costs are simply the gravel and pavement, and we don't have to put all the utilities back onto the road, which are actually far more expensive than the road itself. So we have deployed those strategies because we have to rebuild our infrastructure so often, so. So that seawall that you looked at, this is a typical section view, just sort of a construction drawing of what it looks like from the side. It can extend 15, 20, 30 feet into the ground, depending on the soils. You can see we, you know, we kept everything that's in red, which was stuff we were building within the old roadway, so that we weren't disturbing any natural area, and we weren't trying to progress towards the ocean at all. And the front area where we did put some rock, we tried to create an angle on the front so that it wasn't a vertical face. If you have a vertical face, getting struck by waves, the reflective wave energy then transfers north and transfers north, and can take out more and more dune system. So we tried to create a buffer there, as well as moving it back away from the shoreline. These walls, so you, one of the reasons we're here talking tonight is because we all received a lot of emails about adding seawalls, there were some comments about it tonight. So there are permitting challenges to put them in new places. There are challenges if you try to replace a rock wall with a sheet pile wall. One advantage to putting it behind that infrastructure is there are not, you know, layers and layers and layers of buried rock. You can't drive a sheet pile wall through buried rock, so you have to pre-dig everything out of the way. So if we replace a section of wall that's been in place for decades and has been added to as the rocks continue to sink, you're going to have to clear the area below those rocks with an excavator. So you could be digging 20 feet deep to move rocks out of the way so that the sheets can be driven down into the ground. So definitely challenging in some of our, some of our areas. But if you go in the areas that have just been traditionally sand and gravel, they can be installed. So because of these factors, they can cost anywhere from, I put $600 to $900 per linear, per foot of wall that you create. That, we haven't built, we only built one in 2018. I'm sure the prices of, and ours was over 600, it was between $600 and $700 is what that project worked out to per foot. So I would say even upward of $1,000 a foot is probably, could be anticipated now. So I'm going to pause for a minute related to the seawall, before we move into sort of dunes, and then whatever else you'd like to discuss.
It's kind of related to a structure, but at the meeting we had last week, where they were showing that pretty much all of our boardwalks are effectively shut, like tunnels for water to get in, I started to think about, not wanting to get rid of the boardwalk, definitely, they're all private, but how can we dam that area temporarily? And it made me think about, in Iraq, they had these things called HESCO bearers. They're about eight feet tall, they're very easy to assemble, they're pretty much just a big giant metal cage with cloth, and you throw sand in it. I was kind of thinking, it's like, if we went to all of those funnel points that we saw on that chart, if we kind of, I'm not an expert in this, but it made me think of possible solutions that, one, are temporary, it would only be put up before major storms. But that's where all the flooding came in offshore, that's how I kind of observed it, was they all came in through the boardwalks. And again, I'm not here to get rid of the boardwalks, but how do we utilize certain technologies that are out there? And I just was thinking HESCO bearer, it may not work, but they're very effective to come up, I mean, Councilor Johnston may have seen them, they, you just fill, they just grab dirt with a big giant tractor or whatever, and you dump it in, and it becomes this kind of permanent wall that protects, could protect kind of like all that water from the force of the water, not necessarily seepage and stuff like that, but if we can mitigate some of that there. I just thought of that as a possible technology that already exists, I don't know what they cost or things like that, but they are reusable. I mean, they made bases out of this stuff, where they just create it up, they stack it up, and they create bases out of it. And it just made me think of using that technology for temporary barriers for these access points where these boardwalks are, to at least stop that from happening.
Yeah, and you, you'll actually see that on one of the last slides, so because of the, I mean, we've had, we had some really, well, I wouldn't say productive in the sense that we've built anything since then, but in, just in the last week alone, there's been a regional meeting with FEMA about what can and can't qualify for federal funds. There was the Saco Bay, Saco Bay Erosion Symposium, they had a lot of people at the table, and Pete Slavinsky from Maine Geological provided, and a few of these slides, you'll see their logo down in the corner, I stole from Friday's presentation, with permission, but a list of his recommendations, which include those sort of temporary seasonal, you know, take some off-season, if you will, or winter, extra protective measures that are removed in the spring, so they don't require the same level of permitting as permanent structures. So you'll see that on the recommendation slide as well.
Okay, thank you.
Director Fox, are the, are the walls at their maximum legal height? I mean, how high can you go with these things?
Yeah, so this, the sheet pile wall that you saw the video of, that actually was, that, that top elevation was sort of locked in, because what they, what the regulatory agencies are looking for is for you to sort of match into and not exceed the natural dune system that you're sort of blending in or meeting up to. So elevation 16 is what kind of, is what that was.
16 feet?
Yeah, 16 feet above sea level, so. So this elevation 16, and elevation 12 was the walkway behind it. So it's not meant, these, these walls are not going to keep spray and water from coming over. They are, they are built with some drainage, so that every wave that comes over doesn't get stuck there. That was something we learned from the geotubes, every wave that went over just stayed there, so it was a lot of trapped water. These are meant to at least have a little bit of relief to let the water back out. But there, you cannot build them to a height that would never be like overtopped by waves. With our existing rock wall, we have a special law in place that we got passed at the State House back in 2012 or 14, somewhere in there, that allows us to add rock back to about three feet, three to four, three feet above upland elevation. So if we have a road, we can pile rock three feet higher than the road, but not higher than that.
As a follow-up question, as I've heard some different opinions about this out in the public, in front of the wall, you talked, talked about sand and rocks and that sort of thing, would planting, like sort of densely packed dune grass be a more porous sort of, you know, way of having the waves sort of absorb it through and kind of flow back out, as opposed to just, you know, washing purely sand out? Would actually, would that actually have more of a way of, you know, helping, for lack of a better term?
This is where I get dangerously outside of my expertise, but at the same time-
Best shot, please.
But, no, no, but at the same time, I have been down there for 20 years trying to patch this stuff back together and band-aid it together. The transition zone that you're looking at back on this slide, the rock and hard structure environment is simply too close, to do anything in that, what I call the transition zone, from your hard structure to your dune, established dunes, we planted full dune grass over those geotubes by permit requirement several times. It just, it's too erosive and too violent a wave environment to have it last. It can't, it can't last long enough to get enough of a root system, which is the same thing you'll see with some of the dune maintenance strategies that we're facing even to the north of that. But it's just, in those transition zones, or anything back towards Camp Ellis from Fairhaven Ave, dune grass is not, unless you put it way, way back from the area that's being impacted now for future considerations, it's just not effective.
So it's a frontline, you said it's not-
It's not a frontline, not for that, I mean, this is, we're talking the most erosive section of Maine's coast.
Yeah.
It just won't hold up there. But as you transition north of this point on this slide, it's a great option.
I appreciate the clarity in that, thank you.
Anything, anything else on seawalls, or?
I have a question for you. I know a few years ago, we looked at the possibility, or we will, you or any way of a sheet metal, thank you, I know a few years ago, you were looking at the possibility of a sheet piling in front of North Avenue around that curve, and we know that, I know the story that it got shot down, but I think, different time, different place. Is that something that could be pursued as a barrier that could, I don't know how it fits in, but I, I get, I get the sense from, from listening to Mary Beth Richardson of the DEP, that there might be a little bit of, you know, it might be a little bit of leeway and a little bit of an opening, when she said that, if the urgency was, was shown that perhaps we could get something.
Yeah, I think we can circle back, you won't see that location in any of the photos in the presentation, but it's an area we're all, we're all pretty familiar with, it's the area where the Jersey barriers are on the side of the road as you make the turn down into Camp Ellis, and it's pretty much closed every winter for reconstruct, until we can reconstruct it in the spring. A seawall has been looked at, it was presented, we tried to work through FEMA mitigation funds to receive funding for that, again, at 600 to $1,000, you're probably talking a $300,000 seawall. That is a pretty dynamic location. These sheet pile walls, they do get damaged, so I do have some concerns over, when a sheet pile wall gets damaged, you don't put it back like you do Jersey barriers. Once those sheet piles, they interlock, once they separate, there's not a really good repair procedure. The cap on the other location, which doesn't see nearly the same wave energy, has been actually ripped off, welded on steel cap, and we have, we have to reattach that. So I don't know if it would hold up as well as we'd all like it to. It may be permissible, we did not get through the engineering and cost benefit analysis requirements for the federal mitigation funds when we attempted it a few years back. As a local strategy, I think it has some pluses and minuses that we could certainly look at further.
I would just think that, you know, anything that we could do to make it, you know, make your annual journey down there to repair it less frequent would be worth looking at. I realize that the options are limited, there's, you know, the problem, obviously, is there's no, there's no protective beach to, to keep waves even slightly offshore, so, but I know, I know you've looked at it, and just felt that I should maybe mention it.
Yep. I'll move on to, so this is another great video shot by our communications department, Alex and Andrew, they didn't let me fly the drone, so that's why it came out so well. So this is King Ave and Surf Street, so this is still an active section of Surf Street. This is a bit north of, of the sheet pile wall and into the natural dune system. You're going to see from Maine Geological how much of this dune system has been lost, but I'll just play this while, while I'm giving you the background. So this is an area where the houses on the west, or the left of the screen, they actually own that dune that you're looking at, that's usually vibrant dune grass, but at this point it's overtopped with all of the January storm sand. We didn't want to remove any sand from the system, so when the city was clearing the road for emergency access and restoring access, we left the sand along that dune system. But that, so those houses own the dune, but the dune protects both public and private assets. So that's an area that, you know, there's a pretty clear distinction at this moment, when a public works crew goes down, the distinction between public and private and what we can and can't do, and we stick to that every day and every time we're down there and every time we clean up. So this is an area, this is the type of thing to kind of explore and create a dialogue about doing things different, and how do we, how do we do things that are contiguous across multiple properties and, and multiple dune structures? Because if any one of these property owners do something out in front of this dune system, if it doesn't, if it's not part of a contiguous system, it's going to wash away very quickly. The waves will scour it, they'll attack from the side and the front. So what remains of that dune system, what's available to homeowners right now is typically, they will get a permit through Maine Department of Environmental Protection, and they will do what's called beach scraping, so they can scrape a foot or so of the existing beach and push it up into the dune. And that is a permissible activity. I get a lot of calls and emails and pictures and texts when people are doing it, because it doesn't look right to some people, but it is. The preferred, the preferred method would always be to truck in and add new sand, but you don't have access points, and a lot of the property owners don't have the resources to necessarily just truck in new sand. So they push existing sand into the front of the dune, they plant dune grass back out to where it was the year before, and they roll the dice, wondering if it's going to last a season, or, you know, six months or a year. It never lasts more than that. Here's another example of why. So this is Saco's dune face in red back in April of 2023, just from a, from an aerial flyover image. Saco's dune system after the January storms is the green, that was data provided by Maine Geological. I don't know their data source, if that was field measured or through some sort of aerial flyover. And then the yellow one, which speaks, Councilor Archer, to your point about the walkways, if you look at, this is just one, they did our whole coastline, but this is just one sort of sample area that's similar to the video I just showed you, same stretch of our coastline. The yellow is the overwash, so what we're seeing now is that dune just doesn't have a high enough crest to keep the water, so all the waves are coming over, and they're not being absorbed in the dune system, because the dune system's narrower now and it's lower, so they're inundating several hundred feet in some cases, and if there's a path, they're just using that, that water's using that path to get into the low-lying areas of homes, roads, utilities, and whatnot. And the next one, all of these, if I'm, if I'm going too quick, all of these, we will put up on, you know, we have sections of our website dedicated to coastal erosion, the Army Corps mitigation projects, a lot of this stuff we'll add as we continue this dialogue and strategy. But this is, some, a lot of people here may recognize some of these street names, and this is the estimated dune loss from the face of the dune to where the new face of dune is, just over a one or two-year period, and then the overwash distances in feet of just how far that water came in the January storms. So if you average 13 feet of dune loss across our, thousands of feet of coast, you can imagine how much material that is, that's been washed out and migrated north. So that was, so these were the considerations shared with us on Friday, not recommendations, really, I mean, this is just, this was a very high level. Pete Slavinsky does a lot of coastal modeling, he's been doing it for a long time on the main coast. This was just his takeaways from things that have worked in the past, worked other places, things we could try. Try to implement as many contiguous dune restoration projects as you can, that's something that, you know, there hasn't been a lot of city involvement in that, because like I said, a lot of the natural dunes are in, they're on private property, but they, but they protect a combination of private and public assets, so maybe it's time to have that conversation. Dune restoration and beach nourishment, he was just pointing out that it, it is permit by rule, which is a fairly, it's not as intensive a permit application as some beachfront activities, so it can be accomplished pretty easily. Try to group individual footpaths, or require footpaths to be bridged over the dune system so that they don't just act like a funnel for water to go down. And consider closing off the end of streets, or, you know, any sort of temporary barricades you can ahead of a storm that would prevent water or sand migration into people's properties and homes. And there's a lot of talk about the dredge, and just to show you some of the value of the- the sand that was, and then there's also talk of, can't we just go and put sand in the, you know, in front of everything? And I would say, we should be, we need to be, we need to be nimble, we need to respond quickly, but we also need to be strategic about it, because you, the 60,000 cubic yards of sand that were dredged out of the river and placed north of the jetty, they helped feed the system and add sand north of the jetty for multiple years, but they, the sand only stayed where it was placed for, I think someone referenced, six months. It was less than, it was certainly less than a year. 60,000 cubic yards, if it's not dredged and pumped there, if we just, if someone just said, hey, Pat, Public Works, go put 60,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach, that's about 3,000 truckloads and $1.2 million. So that's thousands of trucks down Ferry Road and through the Camp Ellis neighborhood. So strategically working on our dune system and not trying to push the line forward and placing probably a fraction of that sand and actually getting it to grow dune grass and create a higher ridge, continuous across multiple properties will stop a lot more flooding and damage. Right down in Camp Ellis, obviously, we can't use the dune strategy. So other tools in the toolbox, whether the, whether it's build the rock wall better, maybe sheet pile wall, but again, I think sheet pile wall in the area where there's rock now is going to be challenging. You have to remove all of that rock out of the way and have a time when you can do that that isn't during the, during the coastal damaging season and preferably not during the summer busy season. So the rest is just whatever, whatever discussion you'd like to have, that's all I have for materials for you tonight.
For dune restoration, do you need to have comparable sand?
Yeah, comparable, comparable sand, if you bring in, yeah, if you bring in sand, if you're not beach scraping and you're bringing in sand, it has to be comparable in grain size and type of sand. Fortunately, there's a number of, a number of pits, gravel pits in the Dayton area that have sand that meets spec. We've used sand from a few locations for years, and it's always matched the beach well.
Any thoughts, questions, comments for Director Fox?
Director Fox, sand or mud, or lack of a better term, that we actually dredge from the river or wherever we get it from, what practical use could it be in terms of fortifying, say if we, to your point, if we put sand on the beach or even as a temporary measure, could we make use of that muck, or lack of a better term, that we dredge out of the river or dredge out of wherever we use it from? Because I've, I've had this pushback, I've heard that we simply just can't take the sand we dredge from anywhere and just dump it on the beach, even if it was just to be used as a mitigation effort because of environmental concerns, et cetera. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I mean dredge permitting is certainly far more significant in what you have to do for sampling the material you're going to dredge, establishing the depth you're going to dredge to, and meeting, so you have to sample a certain amount, a certain amount of environmental, like chemical sampling and grain size analysis for how much you want to move onto the beach. And if you start getting into different types of materials, you can't just keep going. You know, you're permitted to put certain materials you characterized on the beach. Can other materials be placed further offshore and still have some effect? That's where you'd have to get into, there are certainly coastal engineers and then consulting firms, that's what, this is what they do. That's beyond, we, we've helped with permitting the dredge that did occur, but when you get into placing materials that are not just sand, that would be a much more complex project. So the only thing I want to add is I think, regardless of the strategies we come up with here, I mean, it's important to know every time we, every time we're rebuilding down there, the assets it takes us to do, we're crossing like three other projects off the list that year. You know, what, the amount of involvement it takes to get the FEMA declared disaster money back with a multimillion dollar capital plan, I don't, we do not have the staff resources to do that and carry out sewer drainage and our full road paving program and all, rebuild everything else across, so when a FEMA declared disaster hits, it, it really does mean that we're crossing other projects off the list. So one thing, one thing that could help is, we have a beach management plan specific to only like the piping plover management, managing the piping plovers and endangered species, because we had to do that related to the, when the dred, when the dredge sand was going to be placed on the beach. There are far more comprehensive beach management plans we could work towards. That would take some consulting efforts, it would take some in-house resources when, when there's time and availability, but a, a consistent beach management plan about, what are we going to do from now, what are we going to do from the jetty to Goose Fair Brook from now until the Army Corps project happens, and then what are we going to do when we inherit the Army Corps project and have to maintain it and deal with, yes, more sand, but that sand migrates and will need, we'll need to manage the beach. And if we move that direction and have an effective beach management plan, we then can leverage other state and federal funds that we can't now. Right now, if there's a federal disaster, the only thing we can work on is the stuff that's within the city, within the city's control or ownership. If we, if we regularly profiled our beach and maintain it in a certain way and check all the boxes, you can actually get sand placement when there's a, when there's a FEMA declared disaster. That's, we have to go above and beyond where we are today to be eligible for that stuff, and we have to put resources to it. But a, a beach management plan for everyone to follow regarding dune, dune maintenance and restoration, walkways, how we use and maintain the beach could be a valuable tool. It can't be written in a week or a month, but it, it could be a valuable tool.
Yeah, I was thinking about the dunes. Again, I'm learning more. I learned a lot on Friday, things that I didn't even know what scraping was. I'm like, okay, yeah, that's when my kid falls down and we kiss a boo-boo. But I started to learn more about it, and it made me really think, I didn't realize a lot of these dunes are privately owned, and I do respect private land. So I started to think about, how do we encourage private owners to maybe do more maintenance, more restoration for any type of damages? And how can we encourage that behavior, encourage that buy-in? One, do we have any city-related fees to permits? And if so, can we waive those if it's in the best interest of the neighborhood and city of Saco? So that was my first one, is if, if we could just waive permitting fees, not the permit, got to make sure that the rules are followed, but the fees associated maybe with anything related to dunes restoration, repair, and maintenance? And then I also thought of, how else can we encourage behavior input by dropping the cost of, of the repair, the maintenance, things like that? Is it possible that city, in, as a fee for service at, at cost, helps do dune repairs, again, paid for by the private owner, but we provide the services at cost so that we're not building in revenue and all that? How, how do we drive costs down to actually repair these dunes? Again, this is just for discussion only, this is workshop, we don't discuss anything. This is about problem solving, and that was just one of the things that I thought, is if maybe we provide the service for at cost in order to really repair those dunes, because as we know, as we've seen, the dunes and the, the people that own the dunes, if they're protecting their property, they're also protecting their neighbors. So how do we find ways to really encourage that type of communal behavior down there? And if we could provide the service at cost, very low, you would know the numbers, I would ask you to do all that research, but just a, a different approach to how we provide city services.
And I, and I think, and that's what kind of keeps bringing me back to this idea of a beach management plan, because I certainly don't want to, I'm not the permitting department or agent for all the permits you need related to beach activities, but a section of a beach management plan could summarize the activities that have fees lowered or waived if that was what, if that was what the council chose to do, and it could just be memorialized in, here's what you can do on your property, and here's a way to encourage more of it. A section on city participation, you know, participation of services, that can, that can get tricky when you're talking at cost, because, you know, city goes up to bid for costs of public materials and wages and all that, and, you know, and then where you use that and how you use it. It all has to be in a document somewhere, and I think, I think a comprehensive beach management plan is the place to do that, and then start to, you know, start to really move from just these one-off projects done by one or two homeowners that are not globally helping the, the beachfront.
Because the way I was seeing it is like, if you have a river and you have a dam, we're kind of like replacing sections of the dam within the river, but we're still letting the river fall through. We're not creating a whole dam, which is what you truly need. What we're doing is we're patching it. And I'm just trying to find solutions on how to get public buy-in, recognizing public rights, private rights, sorry, but also that communal protection. So, thank you.
I might suggest that, as we go through this budget process, that we ask the city administrators, at least give some consideration to the formation of a beach management plan, get some estimates of, of cost, budget impact, and so we can really give it some serious consideration instead of just talking about it, you know, in concept. And I have no idea, you know, what we're talking about here, but I think we, we owe it to our city to take the time to figure this thing out. And my, my only concern about that is that if we decide it is a path to take and we do whatever we need to do to budget for it, we're still talking about time, and there'll be a time lapse here between, you know, putting this beach management plan together and, and the next storm or the, the next issue. So I'm looking at that as more of a, not a, a short-term solution, but maybe a moderate term solution. So I'm not sure we've solved the issues, but I think that's probably a piece that we could contemplate as we, we move into, into the budget season. So if I could ask that to be considered, that'd be great.
Sure. I, I think one thing I'd like to respond to, we're, we're pretty deep into the budget right now, be it March. Certainly, the city council can add to the budget. We can probably do some research relative to the potential cost for a consultant. My recommendation would be to, once we get that information, as we go through the budget process, the council can make a determination, how much you might want to put towards this. The other thing I think we need to start thinking about, and as part of the budget, to do something as it relates to, I've noticed most other communities have people assigned directly to doing this type of work for the, the various aspects of dune restoration and following those, because anything we do is going to be very labor-intensive for us to work with private owners, work with the, with FEMA, work with all the different agencies to make these things happen. So we're going to be looking at that as well. So as we go through the budget, I, I think what we can do is get an estimate relative to a consultant for this, but it won't be directly in the budget I will provide you, but it's something obviously you can, you can place in the budget later on.
I think that's fair, so I appreciate that. I get a little concerned about, although conceptually, you know, the structure improvements within the city, so I think we have to figure out how we, we make that work. I'd like to think we can try to do both, but.
Yeah, our, our project implementation staff hasn't changed much since we had a $100,000 capital plan, and now we're at a $6 million capital plan annually. So, yeah, it becomes challenging. I mean, you can, you can consolidate services, you can reach out, you can use consulting, you know, we have, we have bids for general consulting. There's a lot we can do, but still, at some point, we can only deliver so many projects over a season.
I hear you. And the city should be very grateful for all the work you put in, and I, I hear it in public comment. It's amazing the, the stuff you, you, you put out with your staff, so we all really appreciate that effort.
We do have Chief DuRas here, who is our Emergency Management Director. Didn't know if you had anything to add or any?
I have a question about the, the brass, the tour brass. I, I reviewed a lot of it last year.
Yeah, right now, we're not taking public comment, though? Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
While the chief comes up here, it's just a quick thing for consideration, is possibly the beach management plan can fall under the Shoreline Commission. It can be assigned to them as, as something to consider.
Yeah, and I think as we go through the budget, we'll, we'll try to get some estimates as to what the, the price range would be on that.
Good evening. So I'm prepared to talk a little bit about response and give you an overview of our response over the last three storms, and then certainly take your questions. Three storms in just a couple, three months have been extremely taxing on, on all city services. What we're finding now, the last three storms have, have had a southeast wind component, and what that does is it also floods from the backside on the marshes. So we've had additional properties that have been damaged along the Seaside Ave area. All three of the last three storms, Old Orchard Beach has been impacted, so we end up closing Seaside Ave, no travel into Old Orchard, there's no place to go. And in fact, some of our areas of Seaside Ave have gone underwater for a number of hours, and they were not passable. So there are other properties on the west side of Seaside Avenue in the area of Kenny Shores, and right at Camp Ellis, all three storms, we had to close the intersection at Ferry Road and Seaside Avenue, as that intersection came underwater, we're backfilled in from the river into the marsh area. So what that's done to us, for us, well, that hasn't done anything for us, what it's done to us is it's caused us to have to move our traffic restriction plan. Our plan now is to restrict traffic, local traffic only, at both ends of the Bayview Road. So on the Ferry Road and on Seaside Avenue, we stop traffic, local traffic only, people that live there, people that need to get in there, contractors and such. The rest is no entry. And what we're trying to do is create a safer environment for the residents, for the emergency workers, and for the, to include the double, Department of Public Works crews as they're cleaning up. We try to keep that area closed down as long as possible. We've got loters in there working, crews, hand crews with shovels clearing out storm drains, and we are keeping the Camp Ellis area closed as, as long as we need to, so that it is a safe operation. The January storms produced some property damage to residential buildings, which impacted electrical services. We've had to have a few electrical services temporarily disconnected until they can be checked by an electrician. We also had an occasion to find a lot of floating propane tanks and unsafe propane installations. So our crews are down there, and they are checking all of the buildings that were impacted by the storm, making sure that the electrical services are in good shape, making sure the propane tanks are secured, or we're contacting the service companies to have them come down. So that's the highlights of our response, and it's, 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 anywhere yesterday was about an eight-hour day for us. Is there anything else specifically, Mayor, that you're looking for or questions from the council?
Just want to say thank you for all your hard work and efforts.
Thank you.
Counselor Gunn, did you have something? Okay, any other?
I, I know we focused a little bit on the, sort of the system north of Camp Ellis, and a lot of the people here tonight are from Camp Ellis, so, I mean, our plan is to get Maine and North and Eastern Ave rebuilt, but we wanted to wait till after. We knew this was going to be a high tide cycle this past weekend, so we didn't want to do, start permanent rebuild until after that. It did happen to coincide with a storm. We certainly didn't know that a month ago when we set that date, but we'll begin that work. We really tend to not reopen those roads because of splashover until we can get pavement, and we won't be able to get pavement down on those roads till mid-April. But we will begin moving the rock, the Jersey barriers, and getting the road bases back in over the next few weeks.
And we will, coming shortly, relooking at getting some type of either trash pickup or putting a dumpster back in the spring?
Yeah, keep, keep an eye out on the city, the city Facebook page. You don't have to have Facebook to go there. I don't have Facebook. I go there for all kinds of information. You, you can just look and see if there's postings. We may be doing a, we may be doing a pickup at a, you know, roadside pickup versus dumpster. We just have to sort that out, but it'll probably be after, snow season, which didn't really happen this year, is past us, so after the first week of April.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I think, you know, dunes are, dunes won't, are not going to work in Camp Ellis, and I think it's really important that.
Pat, would you?
Dunes aren't going to work in Camp Ellis, obviously. So I would be remiss if I didn't stand, stand here tonight and ask that any proposals that come forward include Camp Ellis, properties need to be protected, a beach needs to be had. I mean, it, it can't really
I mean, it can't really continue. I heard, I think you heard some people commenting before, it can't continue status quo, because status quo is obviously moving in a very wrong direction. So I know that the options are limited. Look for anything, maybe barging in sand, just getting something in there to, you know, the only year since I've been here, and I've been here for seven years, that North Avenue did not need to be reconstructed in the spring, was the year that the river was dredged, and there was sand there. And that sand, maybe it was purely coincidental, but it, sand did provide enough protection. So, you know, we didn't have to have Public Works down there that spring doing a road repair. And so I think there's some evidence that sand will be helpful, and, you know, there's no beach there really now. So again, I'm hoping that something can come forward. If it can't be sheet pile walls, I'm not a huge fan of seawalls myself, but something needs to be done. Secondly, I would ask that the city be very aggressive in pursuing grants, especially for things like beach management plans, putting dredge utilization. I think, you know, this is a good time to be, to be out there asking. I know grants don't come easily, nor do they come quickly, but they do come. Case in point, the $50,000, they got to do the, they're doing for the climate study on a community grant, so I would look forward to that. And as far as Dune rebuilding, I think Dune building as a volunteer project for, whether it be Thornton Academy or UNE, would be a terrific project. I can't, you know, I can't sit here and, I mean, and look at Pat Fox and everything we want, he needs to come down and build it. He might need to supervise it, but...
We did have the gentleman from UNE on Friday offering up his students.
Yes, and I think we need to, you know, I ask that every avenue be pursued to, especially, you know, I'm obviously, you know, full disclosure, have most, you know, Camp Ellis is important to me, I live there, and so I would really ask that we look to find some immediate solutions. I don't think people are going to feel very comfortable if they're looking out their windows next November and see what they saw at November of this year, because it looked like a disaster waiting to happen.
Thank you. Any final comments, questions? Yep, Counselor Gunn, the Counselor Archer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To Mr. Plavens' point, though, I'm on the record as never being the most enthusiastic person to just, you know, dump sand and hope that it'll make things, you know, go away, but at the same time, we made, after many years of fits and starts, we made a value judgment at this council to essentially save Camp Ellis by instilling, by agreeing to Plan Six, the jetty spur. And we know it's not going to solve the whole problem, but at the very least, it's going to mitigate the problem long enough for us to get to these next steps, these living shorelines, these type of things. And to Director Fox's point, though, yes, we do have a limited budget, and if we start, you know, dumping sand, it does, you know, maybe push a couple things off the table, but at the same time, we're talking about the actual continued viability of Camp Ellis as a seaside community. Not to take something that's radioactive here, but I mean, we've had members of the neighborhood kind of up the road a little bit come into this chamber about a year ago, demanding, you know, sidewalks for Ferry Road, Route Nine, that sort of thing. And if I had to take a value judgment, I, you know, as much as I'm not a big fan of, you know, dumping sand on the ocean, though, if we're talking about the actual viability of the neighborhood and making best use of the taxpayers' money, I'd have to go with the sand, because, like I said, it may not last forever, and it may push some things off, and there might be a price tag involved, though, but, you know, we're talking about a storm next November, well, God, we've had, how many times around Patriot's Day have we had storms in April and May? So we're not out of the woods yet by any measure. I wouldn't take that bet in the world. So just if the council is open to it, though, and I know he's not here tonight, though, but Counselor Berman was adamant on the record to us that, you know, that sand as a temporary measure, at least to get us through to where we're dredging or doing something, might be considered. And like I said, you know, I've always been kind of critical of that, but at the same time, you know, neighborhood can't stand at attention and wait for just, you know, hope the hell that we just get through this season without any more trouble. And that's, I just, I'd want to throw that out there, that I'm open to doing something, even if it's a temporary measure, even if it's, will be criticized as literally throwing money into the ocean, though, because what else are you going to do, you know, under the circumstances that's quick and might give people a little bit of a buffer to get through the summer? That's all.
If you could get sand and throw a dredge on top of it, it potentially could last for, you know, enough time to get, until the Army Corps gets here. We still don't know when that's going to be, and hopefully, we can push them to move a little quicker, but, you know, there's just really no alternative. I mean, if we leave it as is when the Army Corps comes here two or three years from now, who knows what they're going to be trying to save?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Fox, we know that there would probably be some additional cost to bringing in sand, because we would potentially need to barge it in, because the traffic, the road would not, depending on how much was coming down, Ferry Road would not handle the traffic or the weight?
I don't, when you say barge in sand, unless it's coming from a dredge source somewhere, you still have to get the sand from a gravel or sand pit, which typically, they're plentiful out Route Five and Route 35. You still have to get it to a barge somewhere. So I think you're still, if you're looking at inland sources, you're trucking it somewhere. So you might as well truck it right there and save yourself all the costs of, because you're going to spend a lot of money if you double-handle that sand.
Okay.
I mean, 20,000 cubic yards, which is a third of what was dredged, which is a third of what lasted six months, would cost you at least $400,000 to get down there.
And how many truck trips, roughly?
If you had 20, no, when I was doing it at 60,000, I had like 3,000 truckloads at 20 cubic yards per truck, but, because you're probably not going to have the largest trucks, you're going to have something, you know, sort of reasonable size. You're not going to bring the big trailer dumps down unless you have a place, because you've got to find a place to get it out there. The nice thing about dredged sand is it's pumped, you don't have to, you have to find a place where you can get that much sand out on the beach. So probably down by the general store, the end of Main, backing every truck down to Main Ave, dumping it, and then pushing it with a bulldozer. Maybe there are structural wall components, we, you know, maybe the wall rebuilding at that cost could be built. When someone said, could the wall be built better? Well, I'm sure it could. It was a pile of rocks that we keep stacking back up over the last several decades that gets pounded by hundred-year storms on a regular basis. So perhaps some reconstruction of that. But I can explore and talk to people far smarter than me that study this, but sand alone, dumped there in 20,000 or 30,000 yards, is thought to have next-to-zero effect from some of the reports that have come out and some of the studies that have happened. So, but I'll try to put that into a memo for your consideration or something. I understand, you know, it would be great to come up with a fall project of some kind that we can do, that we feel is going to make a difference ahead of the next storm season. I just don't, I can't sit here and say that put 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 yards of sand where we put, where the dredged 60,000 yards went and didn't last a whole season. And they were, that was an incredibly mild, that was a very mild storm season. So it was beneficial, it was beneficial to the system. Sand is always going to help, not hurt, but that coincided with a very mild year as far as storms. So if you had this year and 20,000 yards of sand, you wouldn't even have noticed a difference down there. It's just too powerful a system to think that that small a volume without cutting off the wave energy from the jetty is going to have a lasting effect. But again, there's people that study this stuff far more than I do. We will put something together if that's potentially going to be a budget amendment put forward or something to put large volume of sand down. I will give you a memo describing the logistics of that and some independent decision, you know, some independent and...
Because if we are fortunate enough to get the dredge in for the next season, it won't benefit the next storm season, because that's when it will be in.
Well, if you could dredge in, you know, the next dredge season is November to March, roughly, of, you know, '24 into '25. So you could be placing it during the storm, during the season. You can't really do a large-scale beach placement within the piping plover and endangered species season anyway. So you're in the fall before you can do anything sizable. Obviously, restacking, restacking rock or trying to come up with a better rock revetment profile of what's there, that is simply equipment moving existing rock and...
So you would have limitations this season, the summer season, to do anything, again, based on like the piping plovers or any other regulated aspects?
There's not a lot of options we have from a permitting a resource to do, like, in the next four to six weeks for a May storm. I mean, we've restacked the rock, we've added rock since the January storms. We'll do so again after this previous storm, and then we'll build them both up with the new road, with the reestablished roadways to three feet above the roadway. I mean, that's what we can do in the next six, eight weeks remainder of this season. We can start planning something for the fall. If you're going to be making budget amendments and requests that go through the city administrator, I'm sure I can help and put together some memos for you to weigh the pros and cons.
Counselor Archer, did you have something to add?
Yes, but it would be for the end of this section. Are we there?
I think so, yep.
Okay. As the council's liaison to the mayor and the city administrator, Counselor Mike Berman regrets that he can't attend, but he did email the council things that he'd like to be discussed, and as the liaison, I will be the proxy. Not necessarily my opinion, but I'm just speaking on behalf, and I hope I do summarize Counselor Berman's discussions. He wants to report out that we cannot start until next winter, so he's adding a sense of urgency. It'd be devastating to the homes and neighborhoods along the coast. Camp Ellis is a top priority, but the Ferry Beach area and Kenny Shores are also critical sites. He also mentions not only the tactical, over the next six months approach, but also a Mezzo approach for the next two to three years timeframe, recognizing the Army Corps will start in that window, but we still need to work in today's, in present until then. He encourages, again, help with Dune rebuilding, and he'd like to see the city dump sand on the Camp Ellis beach in public lands. He suggests a couple different financial mechanisms that could be an option to be And he'd like to see the city take any measures possible to protect public infrastructure, including building durable sheet metal walls. And he would ask that the city and its, to help residents advocate for the emergency relaxation of the state's EPA rules, Environmental Protection Agency rules, preventing homeowners engaging in necessary mitigation, including bringing in new materials and building durable wall structures. So again, that was just a summary, it wasn't word-for-word. I do apologize to Counsel Berman if I misspoke, but I wanted his, he wanted his voice to be heard, and he does regret not being able to attend today. That's it, thank you.
Kevin?
I just want to, can you hear me on this? Yeah. I just want to follow up on Pat's, on the beach management plan. I mean, that, we have the scars from that, from the piping plovers days, just to get the Army Corps plan approved, and Barnstable County has, the towns on Cape Cod have a plan, the whole county has a plan, Cape Cod has a plan, New Jersey, Florida, Massachusetts, all around have plans, and I just think that whether it's Saco or Regional, we need to get that going as soon as possible. As for sand getting to the beach, especially in Camp Ellis, the math is, you know, 20,000's worse than 60,000, no question, but Pete Solinsky had brought up that even though that 60,000 cubic yards lasted a year on, or a season on the beach, keep in mind that not only has it traveled north, it also helped a little bit offshore, too. It buffered those waves, so maybe some success in 2020, '21 winter, '21, '22 winters, that had a good effect. That sand did start from the jetty. I think this emergency is mostly at the corner there, so if we can hyper-focus on, no matter how the sand gets there, a dredge, trucked, or whatever, that should be the focus to get us by each season. So you'd have to plan for this each, each season until the buffer jetty is put in. Thanks.
Okay, any other...
Can I just say one thing, Jody? It should also be noted that the sand that was dredged in that dredge was very fine sand, and if we're going to dredge sand, I think we need to find a source where we can get a coarser, heavier sand, one that, again, it's all relevant, I get it, but I think that was a factor in how quickly it moved, and it moved very quickly.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. Rick?
May I add?
Just one last comment.
I have, I have something that could be used in addition to sand, and I do believe that sand is important. In my spare time, I read scientific papers, although that may not seem very interesting. One of the areas that I'm interested in is seaweed, and they have found in a number of areas where they have seaweed, it actually reduces the wave action on the beach. We're talking about wave energy, wave energy is what moves sand. What I'm proposing is that we actually build an artificial seaweed reef. It would be done with steel or galvanized cable. It can be done over, attach it to the existing jetty in enough water, so there's like 10 feet below the seaweed curtain. But instead of seaweed, we can use these vinyl panels that they use at freezers and so on for demarcation of rooms, to keep the heat inside and so on. They're very heavy plastic, they're about six to eight feet long, and they're about nine to a foot wide. I'm talking about running those probably someplace around 2,000 feet offshore, so that they be, they will interrupt the wave energy. You can do them in multiple rows. 750 feet of this stuff installed, which can probably be partially, if not totally, installed by a local fisherman. The only thing they may not be able to do is the mooring blocks. It can be done for less than $20,000 for 750 feet. Probably have a little bit of maintenance associated with it. If you put it in as a temporary factor, it could be put in in the fall, taken out in the spring for small money, and it'll give you 15% to 20% reduction in wave energy. So if you're going to put some sand on the beach, it'll make it last just that much longer. Thank you. I've got drawings and stuff if you want.
Okay, yeah, I would like to...
Yes.
Sir, if you have any literature related to this that's online or any documents they have, I would certainly be open to having you email the mayor and the council.
I will, I'll mail it, the references are included.
Well, good, because, like I said, you know, it's, you know, we can spitball these great ideas, but they're just ideas unless we have a chance to look at them.
For whatever it's worth, this stuff has been looked at in wave tanks and stuff, and the numbers that I quoted, not the class numbers, I figured those out, but the wave reduction, wave energy reduction numbers have been verified in wave tank testing.
I'd be interested in looking at that, thank you.
All righty.
Rick?
Hi, it's Rick.
Rick?
Rick.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. You mentioned seaweed. I'm only asking because we have a kelp farm off our coast here.
Yes, we do.
Can that be substituted?
You can use the seaweed shore.
Or the kelp of the...
The kelp, yeah, but the, where it's located here is behind Wood Island, and that's not going to help you.
But they're growing it.
I'm talking about, I would be talking about putting it on the other side, closer to shore. Not only that, it is, it's behind the island, so it's basically protecting the island and not anything else. If we put it on the other side, we can, we can actually string it where the jetty is going to go, and that way, it will protect that section of the beach. You could actually extend it to what we had in like 25A, which was 3,000 feet and so on, and get that much protection on that bar. It's, it's not a usual thing, it's sort of a experiment, so you could really have UNE participate in this to make sure it's engineered and installed correctly and maintained over time, and you can get the data off it, and they can write a report as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
...documented method of wave attenuation.
Yep. Which is a whole nother conversation.
Yes.
We know that Kevin and David, they've researched a lot.
And if we had done it five years ago, we'd have 20% to 40% reduction in the energy of those waves.
Okay. Next up, we do have the joint council and the long-range... Next up, we do have the joint council and the long-range planning committee discussion. Would like to invite the members of the LRPC. Okay, councilors, per charter, we do, are required to have a joint meeting with the LRPC for an update on the long-range planning.
So the long-range planning committee is made up of residents and staff who work together, so it's, it's a fun committee because there's a nice mix of different people on it. So today with us, I'm happy to have Sandy here, Matt and Melissa. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Sandy Gay, resident Saco and member of the long-range planning committee.
Matt Provencal, the planning board chair.
Melissa Field, resident, and I'm also on the conservation commission.
And we do sit together when we all meet, so even though it looks like we're separated here, I have Tracy here with us.
And Tracy DeStardens, Director of Economic Development.
And then behind me is obviously Chief Clements and David Toomey, Director of Code Enforcement. And there's others, staff that come to our meetings as well and other residents, but this is just kind of the representation who can make it here tonight. So we just put together a little PowerPoint. We don't have to state this, but this is kind of a overview of what the committee's been working on. We reformed spring of last year and we started working on our reporting tool, which is one of the requirements out of our Article Four standards for this committee. So this committee is supposed to be advisory to the city council, is supposed to oversee the long-term vision through plans, studies, and then obviously the comp plan implementation. And one of the major things it's tasked with is creating a reporting tool to tell the city council and share information on where we are with our comp plan implementation process. So again, we hear a lot about studies being shelved, so hopefully we don't hear that anymore because you know that you have a whole committee working on this. So the first thing I'll just kind of share is our LRPC reports. This is supposed to get a snapshot of where we are in implementation a year after our March 2023 approval of the comprehensive plan by the state. And then what we're going to do as a committee is compile this report data and submit it back to the city council. In a perfect world, we would have done this two months ago, but we did a lot of work on our reporting tool and we're here at the time that we're here and so next year, we talked as a committee about getting these reports out to everyone around December and then having the info back for budget season. Sandy and Matt, do you want to jump in here on anything? We are a talkative group if you come to the meetings. So an overview of where we're at with the reporting tool, we, she can't be here with us tonight, but our budget and analytics director, Glennis, also did a good amount of work on this and we came up with a, should have been a one-pager, but some committees have many tasks, so sometimes they're getting, you know, five plus pages. But basically, we asked each, each different committee to report in where they're at with their strategies and we gave the strategies, the description, whether their lead or support, this came right out of the implementation matrix of the back of the comprehensive plan and then we just asked them to report in their progress. We're hoping to get out of this, maybe there's something already started we want to capture. We did do a one-pager about progress that has been made to date back in the summertime and that's up on our webpage. Maybe the committee feels like it's not applicable, maybe there's something the committee really thinks is important that's not captured in the comp plan. Melissa had some great feedback for us and so we offered like an open-ended question at the end, so we can get more data on what the committees and commissions feel is very important to carry out their mission and their charges. So that's the overview on the reporting tool. The planning board started their review of their reporting tool at their last meeting and then the other reporting tools are almost all disseminated. There's a few more left for the planning department to send out, but we're almost done with that. Most people were asking for responses by either April 5th or 12th, depending on when they've received it. We will also be sending to the resource entities such as the age-friendly and Saco Main Street Anyone can jump in here if you want.
I think you're doing a great job.
All right, we'll just keep going.
No, this, I will for just a moment. The reporting tool, it's Emily and her colleagues have done a fantastic job putting it together and it'll be, it'll be nice to see how the different committees respond once we receive those comments back, so that's sort of our next step, but it's coming together pretty nicely here.
I witnessed the introduction of this at the planning board meeting and I, I would agree with Matt. I, I think that when we take steps like this, these studies don't stay on the shelf. They get utilized like they're supposed to. So I'm very impressed and this is one small piece of the bigger puzzle, so if you've got total engagement from other boards and commissions in a similar fashion, I think this is fabulous and then we can take stock in where we, where we've come with this plan. Because the plan's only as good as the paper it's written on, it's the actions that are behind it that get things done. And I can see the first two things on this sample here are just very important issues that we're going to need to address here at some point, so, kudos.
Yeah, and I also want to thank Chief Clements, who came to meetings with Glennis and me and we've tried to narrow it down and so we're looking forward to the next step. So Glennis built out an Excel spreadsheet with us and she's also been doing some reporting tool in the backend for capital planning. So unless there's questions on that, we can go to the, the next initiative.
Again, just to reiterate, Counselor Hatch, I started with the comprehensive plan group, then turned into LRPC as the council liaison, so I've been with it since step one. The work, the whole entire committee has done from day one is amazing and again, I've seen the growth of that final plan of how we are able to prioritize, how we are able to see the work that's being completed, because we've had for years, previous comp plans that became shelf-ridden with no follow-up. So no, again, myself starting from one, kudos to the entire group as well.
I agree and the last time I, I came off and Counselor Johnson came on, the last time I knew, we had like 90-something action items. Are we still in that?
Yeah.
Are we still in that range?
Yeah, the list is long.
So the sample is fine, because I understand how all the other action items exist.
And I believe the council will be getting your own report to fill out. I had, I provided that to the city administrator today, so you have your own list as well. Yours is a little long.
We can table the due date though, just to let you know.
Thank you. Yeah, being one that has maybe championed the, the term of shelving the report, so I will say, I certainly wasn't the first counselor that used it. I borrowed that from Les Smith, because he spent 20-plus years of looking at plan after plan being shelved. This is certainly a step in the right, right direction and kudos to you and everybody involved, because this is what really I had in mind when I advocated for the creation of the long-range planning committee. You know, we, we've had the plans, the plans actually kind of had step by step, it just never got implemented and clearly we needed this to exist, to implement, so I'm excited to be a part of this committee now and, and look forward to, you know, working with everybody.
It also has a tracking component, which it's never had before, which is very helpful.
One of the things, again, this just literally popped into my head, that I think would be helpful tool, when it's possible, and obviously it's not always possible, is if some of these items could potentially have a dollar figure or an estimate with implementation, just so we can, you know, see what, you know, costs may be.
Yeah, and we've talked a lot about that. That was one of the, the items staff really wanted the, the plan to have initially and so at this point, we're going to get the reports back and then we'll try to provide some additional information on that. It may wind up looking like when you go out to a restaurant or when you read reviews like one dollar sign versus four dollar signs. It may wind, wind up being something simple like that, just to get us started. So this is Portland Road Subarea Plan. I know that the council has seen this topic for maybe a year and change now, so I'm excited to bring this forward. This was something Jason Garnum had actually identified and it was listed as a comp plan item for the future. We have funds from the Unified Planning Work Program with GP Cog and PAX for some of this plan and then the other part of that plan is supposed to come from contracted services line item money, which I'm holding in my budget, which is why the contracted services line is so large for planning right now, because it hasn't been spent down yet. So I'm excited to say that we're going to start the visioning process on this. I talked with the long-range planning committee at their last meeting and we're going to move forward looking at the zone as a whole. I would say we had some fun discussion already on it at the last meeting and we're really going to look at Portland Road through a visioning process to see where the gateway corridor should exist, where mixed use should probably be developed and then is there an opportunity for some village business zones and/or traditional, transitional zones? This may look at creating three zones. We're not sure what this will end up with. We really have to, like I say, go through this first step of the visioning process to get to the next step. So just some high-level info on this, what does the comp plan say about this Portland Road zone? It's a corridor transformation growth area. I won't read all of this information, but it's supposed to accommodate future growth, higher density, safety improvements, beautification efforts, and then preservation of habitat blocks and looking at a shared vision for that corridor was part of the comp plan implementation matrix. And then this was a future land use plan from the comp plan, so again, it just shows that corridor transformation area where the Portland Road zoning district currently is. And as part of the subarea plan, the overarching question we'll be looking for is how do we want to see Portland Road develop and redevelop? We had good conversation about this, so I think Counselor Johnston and Counselor Gunn, they were both there and we had this initial review where let's ask and go through a public process as to what we want to see in this area and then have recommendations brought forward to council to change the zoning in a holistic way rather than piecemeal. And I would say that internally as staff, we have, Tracy and I have looked at different options of the Portland Road zoning district with both people asking for business uses and what the restrictions are. Chief Clements and I did a nice drive of Route One, kind of looking at, you know, where considerations are for different development impacts. And then Dave and I have talked about different areas of Portland Road as well and does it feel like it should be different zones or have different zoning in different sections? And with the committee members, we had a nice conversation about this at the last meeting. I don't know, Sandy and Matt, if you want to talk about anything here?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't really have.
We'll see, we're in the visioning stage, so they're thinking about it.
I know none of you are microphone shy, come on, between meetings.
I, I would like to say though, I mean, I've, I've been involved with the city now and, and with the comprehensive plans since early 2000s and gone through several iterations of them and I think it was back in the, maybe 2011 and maybe Counselor Johnston might remember, we started talking about that, you know, we started seriously talking about this area of Portland Road and talking about plan use developments and trying to come up with a different way to utilize all of that area there. So it's really exciting right now for me personally to be involved where it's actually starting to, being looked at more seriously and taking some, some shape. So just for me personally, it's a very exciting time to be here and working on this right now and I thank the council for putting this committee together and the work that staff's doing on this is great.
And Chief Clements?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think the last meeting, we had a very good conversation about looking at Portland Road and conceptually, what would that look like if you broke it up into three different zones? Obviously, we have the area that has, you know, the car dealerships, but what do we do on either side of that? What does that look like? Trying to bring things into Saco and really develop that area so that that's kind of another economic engine for the city of Saco that would be, I, I think it would be exciting to see what we can do up there.
I agree. When we're looking at property as far as for growth and for development, what we're looking at is Portland Road. That's the only place we can go. Everything else is pretty much saturated and what we are seeing is those who do have land out there, they want to do something with it. I get calls all the time, developers looking at the area and again, Emily and I are pretty much on a, a daily schedule as far as in meeting and talking about, as well as Dave, on what makes sense for that area. We do have a lot of the residential in the back. Let's really look at that front as some good commercial to get that really good mixed use out there, especially as we're looking for a new school out in that area as well and what makes sense.
I, I think that last point you made is critically important as we look at the grow, the residential growth, not only what's already occurred, but what could potentially occur and the imbalance we have from a tax base between residential and commercial. And it really concerns me that, you know, this has been sitting there and we're all excited, because we've all seen it just kind of sit there when the current zoning ordinance was approved, master plan development for that area was, was tabled and it's been years being on the table, so I'm really excited as well to see this coming back with a lot of enthusiasm, both staff and, and folks from, from the public. And I do think we need to really get our arms around this quickly and we need to really keep in mind the importance of developing the commercial aspect. I don't want to disregard the benefits of residential at all, but I do think that this is our, probably our last hope in the city of Saco to do something material relative to, to commercial development, so keep the enthusiasm going and keep working at it and I for one, as a counselor, am going to be in total support of your ideas and thoughts. I think it's great that we get the synergy going. Thanks.
And I think that these are all really good points and we will be looking at redevelopment potential as well, because what we put in place today in a plan probably will not be on the ground until 15-plus years and it's not going to look exactly like our plan, but it would give us direction as to what the community is really looking for and help us, help you to point that development where you want it.
Could I, Emily, I, just to add, it takes me a minute to think and gather my thoughts. I'm ready now. No, it's good to get back into it from working on the zoning ordinance provision, the master plan development discussions, the nodes. No, it's good to get back into it from working on the zoning ordinance provision, the master plan development discussions, the nodes. There's a lot of potential out there. It was a bit confusing. It was a little overwhelming. There's a lot happening, COVID, so it got tabled. So it's good to get it, you know, get back into it. Because I think most recently, some of the, some of the development there is just, in my opinion, missed opportunity. Just maybe kick the can down the road and kind of end up with what we have, I think is unfortunate. But it's good to get back into it, refocus on it and really, really plan it out well and thoughtfully. That's the goal here.
And Matt, I just want to add to this, you're right, you're spot on. But I think one of the issues that, that concerns me a little bit is, is the speed at which we, we get to that point because a lot can happen between now and then. And, and whether or not there are steps we can take to preserve, you know, our sovereign rights to think about properly planning that area before stuff gets in there that we're, we're not going to be happy with. So I don't have an answer for that question, but I do think that the quicker we, we try to resolve these issues, the better off we're going to be.
Looking at this area, and again, I'll use up to 15 years as just the backdrop was if we develop it the way that it's intent. A few years ago, we were looking at putting a satellite fire station, police office room. I don't remember what it was called. Is that something we would bring back with this type of development in this area? Because if I remember correctly, it created a, for the fire stations, it created like a triangle from the western downtown out. That was the plan, but then I'm not quite sure what led to, do you remember what led to the, uh, chief would?
Well, we would, we would incorporate a, a potential fire station location within this plan as we would many different development options and opportunities. At the end of the day, I would like to say, this is where Saco would like a grocery store. This is where we would like high density housing. This is where on Route One would like a mixed use.
And with that development, we would get that need back.
Yes.
And do we have land out there for the fire department or future growth for city operations?
Potentially.
I think the conversation that we had was really looking at it from that master plan view, right? So when, when we look at a, a large chunk of land or what's out there, you know, conceptually, how do we want to have that look? And then also when you get a big area like that, incorporating things like, you know, knowing that the city is growing that way. Where, where's, you know, where's the right place to put, you know, a fire substation? You know, what's the, the long range? I think it's in the capital plan, down the road, you know, having, you know, either a, a police substation or moving the police station a little more central in the city. You know, this is years down the road, but just planning for that stuff. Because that's where things are going to start growing and just being prepared for that. But really making it look good and doing it correctly so that when it happens, everyone's really happy with it and it brings a ton of value to the city.
And on this also, so we have Chief Durost in the back and obviously the Public Works Director and both of them do at times get involved with long range planning. But with Public Works, we also want to look very closely at the transportation system in this corridor and figure out where it makes sense to do certain transportation related items, whether that be a road diet or slowing down certain areas, especially where the, the school is proposed. So we do have the transportation master plan, so we'll be careful not to confuse scopes of work on both of these. But we will be looking really closely at this corridor for transportation as well as land use. So it's, it's going to be, like I said, as holistic as we can make it for the resources we have. And I think we have a good mix of staff and committee members to make that happen and give you some good, good answers based on what, whatever the vision is that comes out of the next stages of this process.
I for one, I'm thrilled. I mean, you guys know, you've probably heard me a broken record for the last five years that Portland Road has always been kind of one of my priorities. So I'm, I'm glad to see it with long range planning. I thought that the times, like you said, it was a little overwhelming for the planning board when it was first brought, so much going on. And then to say, okay, hey, here's this whole district, let's, let's get it set. I was liaison at the planning board at the time and it was just kind of, it wasn't, it was an overwhelming thing. So, and I think we're going to get a different point of view from the long range. Different opinions, different groups, everybody's looking at it. So I'm really glad to see it back on the table. It's the entryway into our city from that side. And I don't know about you guys, but I drive down it now and I have a whole different view to it. It's not, it, it's not pretty. I hate to say that. And we do, we want it to be inviting. We want it to be, we want it to be an area that we're going to bring in other communities from Scarborough, Portland, coming in, getting a taste of what Saco has, but maybe not bringing all the traffic to our downtown. You know, creating it as two separate aspects of what Saco has to offer. We've got the amusement park, we've got the water parks, you've got the entrance to Old Orchard. It's, it's its own little realm that really needs to be focused on. So no, I, I, I'm excited that it's with you guys and I'm, and like Phil said, I'm, I'm happy to see the excitement that you are to work on it and put the vision with it. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I will just say about existing development, we're seeing, we really, as part of this, will also want to look at design standards and bringing some standards back a little bit differently. Right now, they wound up as guidelines in our zoning ordinance. And so the direction to applicants and developers is not exactly aligning with the community vision is what I'm, I'm sensing for that area. So I'm also very excited to, to start this process.
And on that point, I would encourage speed in getting zoning amendments before the council to assist you in that effort because the longer we wait, the more we're going to see things pop up that we might not want. Good.
I was just going to say, I would agree. I, I think that our design standards, for lack of a better term, have sucked for as long as I can remember. Particularly when you look at just surrounding communities at the level, you know, that they, they essentially force people to go to. And the outcome's better for, for all of us, you know, both aesthetically and just, you know, the overall flow of things. So it's something we touched upon briefly during the ZORs process, but it was definitely something I was, was hoping to dig deeper into. And I look forward to that opportunity now.
And I think it will be important as part of this process to also engage business owners and property owners out there because we will be, again, looking to change things and we would like to have their input. So that'll be part of this as well. And then just moving forward, knowing that we, we should be giving as much information upfront to applicants and developers to make it as clear as possible. It's really, you can ask for a lot, but as long as you're doing it very early in the process, it's a lot easier. Initial considerations for this, this is just some, some of what we're going to be considering, which we've basically already covered here. And then the next steps, we'll be doing a visioning session with LRPC, looking to do that possibly either the last week of March or maybe early April. And then we'll be tapping into regional planning resources. I just have to get back to GP Cog and iron out details on the scope of work, which we've submitted a draft of the tasks involved for this project.
I would, am I interrupting? I would encourage members of the Long Range Planning Committee, especially when we're having those discussions, when you're talking, when you're thinking about visioning what you want the corridor to look like, to take some leaps and be as specific as you, as you, as you can be. Because you mean, you can say that you're business in this section, residential in this section, but really throw out concrete ideas of what that means to you because that'll allow us to basically get our handle around whether or not we're all on the same page or should we reinstate something similar to the nodes that we had? Because as it stands right now, I mean, if we do nothing, I mean, it's my backyard and it'll end up, you know, being an industrial base, but not a very aesthetically pleasing one. And to your point about being the gateway to the city. And it, it, we can utilize, you know, the high speed Route One going in and out, easy way to get in and out as a business quarter for the city. But at the same time, I'm often told people that, you know, if we're going to have affordable housing, if we're going to have housing stock options, a way to avoid the debate that we often have when we try to infill, like the comprehensive plan says, but at the same time, neighbors and local businesses and the built up sections of the cities have legitimate concerns about adding more housing stock in that area that you just have Portland Road sitting there and you really could make use of this master, master plan mixed use. That's why I'm very excited to actually hear people actually saying master plan again. Because I figure that I was, you know, basically was tabled and was never going to be put up again though. So I would just invite you all to basically be as specific as you can possibly be. And we can hash out the details later though, but just put it all in the, you know, just to put it all on the table so we don't just go as vague as possible and just end up with the same results though. Because I mean, again, we bring in some businesses though, but we lose that ability to really make it dynamic. Sort of what there have been, you know, obviously we've seen Scarborough with, between West Scarborough, Dunston and with the Downs and stuff though, I mean, we could do, you know, smaller versions of that with some of the space that we have already though. We just want to, don't want to lose that opportunity, especially as we're going forward.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think what I find exciting about this opportunity, again, my whole life, I have been really discouraged by the way that the current pattern development has existed and continued to, to move through. I'm excited about the opportunity for the redevelopment because I look out there and it's, it's always been called the auto mile. It's probably longer than a mile, but you look at most of those lots and they're pretty vacant of cars. So we have that opportunity, if we can figure out what we want, the then task, you know, staff, economic development, to go find those type of businesses, to then infill those current lots that are underutilized. And then of course, you, you do have all that acreage out there that hasn't been built upon, which is, is less than it was even 10 years ago. So, you know, to, to Councilor Hatch's point, you know, we'd kind of be expeditious about it because it's rapidly disappearing daily almost. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with all of this. This is good. I think the, the first steps I think we'd like to take is deciding on what we don't want. I think that's sort of step one. You know, there's trying to figure out what we do want, let's narrow it down by what we don't want. And I think that's, that's sort of the first step. I think where we, where we sort of left it was sort of all encompassing almost. Let's, let's put feelers out, let's see what developers are looking for. And that, well, we, we found out what developers are looking for. It's, and then I think that answered the question, it's not what we want. So I think, I think we can start there and build upon that.
At the same time, you all have friends and family that live in the city of Saco though. Anecd, you can ask anecdotally, it's like you're not, it's like you're not experts, but you live in the city, you have ownership. If you were dictator for five minutes, what would you do that, do that? And they're practical and, you know, real ideas come, you know, germinate from that though. So I mean, I'd encourage all the members to reach out to, you know, everyone who's just cares and see what they have to say though. I mean, it's, you know, it's, this is a, you know, opportunity to really get some ideas that maybe that we're, you know, maybe be right be in front of us, but we're completely overlooking because all of us, you know, when you get into a city and you live in it, sometimes you don't envision that there could be A over here, B over there. So, you know, whackier the better, who knows, we actually might have something, you know?
I love it that the, your committee is looking at this because your committee, different from the planning board, doesn't have as many constraints. You have the ability to really think, you have the ability to talk without the constraints of, of state law. So I'm, I'm really excited that this committee is looking at this area. The way I look at it is, again, that plan is your canvas. You're the paintbrush. Give us a masterpiece. Yeah. That's something that you can't really do on the planning side and I understand. I mean, I know that that's what it is, but you as a committee have a lot more flexibility. You have, you can look at it 10 years out. You can look at it. And I do believe when I was on the committee, we gave good, good conversations and that's how we found 90 something action items. But now looking at this plan specific at a strategic five to 10 to 15 years out, I'd love to see what the product, that masterpiece that you guys all create. Thank you.
Related, but a little, what is the status of the Cumberland Farms that's supposed to be going on the corner cascade? Because I think like, you know, we have certain aspects of that corridor that are, we look at as anchor. And I would think that would be an anchor and that's almost four years since they've been approved and have done nothing.
So actually, we have restarted some conversations about that. They are going back to a slight amendment, slight downsizing of the structure, but hoping for a, I believe, March 24th start now. But there is some work that has to be done before we come back with a amended plan. But there have been discussions about that recently.
I think we worked the design review on that pretty well also. So hopefully there's still amendments.
You said what?
The design review. That went through a good, good design review. So hopefully there's no amendments there.
Still, still in process, but they have a couple of.
It is still in process, yeah.
I think Chief Clemmons has a comment over here too.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say is I'm, I'm actually really glad that we came up here tonight because when we sat down in Glennis's office and Glennis built, built out this spreadsheet and we started looking at all of the things that are in the comp plan, I got to be honest with you, it's, it's overwhelming. So we, yeah, I mean, but we started chunking things out and there was some low hanging fruit that was already being handled. But if I'm reading the group correctly, I, I agree. I, I hate it when you develop a plan and it sits on a shelf and gets about an inch of dust on it. If there's one area out of the comp plan, and, and we're not going to be able to hit everything within the city, but if there's one area that I know for me personally, I think would just make a phenomenal difference in the city of Saco. I mean, really bring us to the forefront is focusing our attention on that Route One corridor. I got to tell you, that's something that I think would really, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I mean, when you come into Saco, that should be, when you're coming in from Scarborough, that should be like, all right, wow, we're coming into Saco. This is, wow. And I do think combining it with the work that's being done at GP Cog and PAX, I mean, getting all of that put together and then utilizing what's out there, I mean, that's, I think that's something that I would like to be able to say that down the road, you could drive through Saco and be proud of the fact that you had, you had a piece of that. Because and you really made the city just, you know, it just brings you right into downtown and you're like, wow, we went through all this stuff. Now we're in a quintessential New England downtown. This is great. That's exciting to me. I think that's exciting.
Just mentioned too, that there's other places in the state along Route One where they've been going through some pretty significant redevelopment, like shopping centers that are changing over and no longer shopping centers. Now they're becoming mixed use with restaurants and commercial and residential use. And I think that developers are really starting to think that way too. So this is not only a really good opportunity time wise to get this plan together quickly. I think it's an opportunity because I think that's what developers are looking for now, those kinds of new, new ideas and, and new projects to work on, so.
And there's also an initiative for reimagine Route One, looking at transportation and how, how we interact with Route One in a larger fashion than just in Saco. So this does, with all, everything going on regionally, I think this plays really well into timeline, timing wise. And so I'll report back timelines with the city administrator and the Long Range Planning Committee as we move forward. I have to get those from GP Cog and determine what they will be. But usually plans take about a year to, to get fully completed because we want to make sure that there's enough time for public comment. We'll of course do it as quickly as we can, but that's probably the realistic amount of time.
Great, thank you. Any other final comments or?
Chief Clemmons did forget to mention that if you're driving down the Route One corridor into Saco, that you drive at or below the speed limit. Get the public safety message out there if you would.
And if you see an unmarked black Dodge Durango, lights that come on, we're out there working it.
So not really related to this, but related to potential policy or stuff like that. If, what I'm saying, I hate this term in the business world, but it's called synergy. We're all kind of in agreement that that area is targeted. Is this where we look at fee reductions and other credits to really encourage growth there? Because a lot of times if people are growing, they're developing where the land is cheaper, but we are saying, hey, this is a great place. Rather than buying the cheap land and paying for the expensive land, can we make that land cheaper so that we can encourage this growth? How does the city not just do it through planning board, through zoning, but also through fiscal incentives or lower impact fees, things of that nature for this area? Anything that we target, we strategy, the city strategizes as an area, that should have some incentives to it to really encourage growth through the areas that we prefer. And whatever your committees identify as.
So the wheels are turning over here already, I can hear.
I'm sorry?
Wheels are turning over here already.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I think that's why we have a nice synergy. But I think that's why we have a nice synergy going and so, it would be my theory that once we determine a little bit more of the policy, then we could then line up where.
I was just trying to start the conversation in a workshop setting, that's it.
Can you, is, is that a TIF area? I know at one point, at least on the other side with the, with the contracts.
We have some, some of that out there. You have a transit-oriented TIF district, so, you know, it goes in, in certain areas that are brought into that.
Yeah, I like your question, Marshall. I'd like to see it maybe in a, I'm going to challenge planning staff, but we took out some of the open space and green space sections of the ordinance to rework it, but I think that might be an area to, maybe higher density, if we have more green space, solar, less parking. Mixed, commercial. Yeah, I, I think maybe we can incentivize in. Because I'm a big fan, I have a place in Florida and it's all restaurants and shops on the bottom floor and condos all above. And in a lot of cases, the restaurant, some of the people who actually live there work downstairs. And it creates just this feeling that I like to head down there every four to, three to four months because I, I enjoy that, just going downstairs and having some dinner. Shop, my wife likes shopping at the boutique stores, there's a masseuse down there. I love those visions and Saco doesn't have that. We have it in a different way, but not that kind of immediate access to where, and to encourage that type of stuff because, again, it's commercial, it's residential, it's, it's retail, and it's all just one area. It, it works. Yeah. It does work well. It works. So, yes.
We also need to know that we need a good, good-sized residential base to support the businesses that will be on the bottom floors in those scenarios. So, there, there is some acknowledgement that this may wind up increasing your residential density, but that was planned as part of the comp plan, is that this area would handle more residential growth.
The area has, it's four stories high, just to put in perspective, and it has about 100 units. That plus the neighborhood, people come in to the Mezzaluna is one of, I'm not doing a sales pitch, no one's going down there to have pizza, but it, it drives people there. And it's set up on a decent-sized road, so, you know, the infrastructure's there.
I'd be curious of either a future workshop or future new business having presented to us to clarify what possible use we could use of the TIF funds for that district because if they're available for transportation, that's money we should not leave on the table and it actually might help jumpstart what we're all talking about though because, I mean, again, you know, it's a gift from our state and we use them, we don't use them where it's our own fault to the taxpayers that we drive up the rates for something we don't have to pay for.
Is there any vision for any corporate or business entities to come in that would provide employment for people in Saco? Is that something you guys envision or are you thinking smaller?
Any company that comes into the area, we would look at hiring employees here in Saco. Anytime that I do something, it's, it's really kind of working towards that, how many employees are you going to have? Um, one of the things that I did actually a couple of weeks ago is I went to visit the York County Community College. And we are working on as far as that, for any employer that comes into the area that needs training for employees, that we would partner with them and they would offer the training program for the employers. And this is kind of where within my budget that I have the opportunity to use, like business retention or expansion and workforce development to kind of help with those training programs. So, it's, I'm really excited about this partnership.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the update. Okay, next on the agenda is the administrative update.
Yeah, there we go. There we go. I did provide the city council with a written report, primarily deals with some items that are going on right now, specifically the piping plover monitors. The Park and Recreation Department is looking for volunteers to be piping plover monitors beginning April 1st. And if anyone is interested, you know, you can reach out to Ryan Summer. Also, just a reminder that all dog owners, that beginning April 1st, all dogs must be leashed on Saco beaches. Also, I did a, a, an update relative to the start of the Saco Water Resource Recovery Facility upgrade, construction beginning, and certainly people can review that online. Also, talking about some new employees, we do have a new patrol officer, Channing Leflam, Travis Moore, Deputy Director for Public Works. And we have three firefighters coming on and Mitchell Habu, James Mack, and Alex Moran. And so, we have those positions being filled and certainly if anybody's interested in working for the city of Saco, we have some other openings. We would encourage people to look at our website for those. So, things are moving forward in a very positive way. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Any questions or comment for city administrator, Mahankal? Okay, that takes us to item six, council discussion and comment. Any councils with comments or discussion? Okay, and that is final for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. We'll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6-0. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.